You'll be fine. All right, we're ready. No gavel, so I'm calling the meeting to order. So first, Councilmember Hare, could you please do the invocation for us? Would we all like to stand or do the invocation?
Hold on to this chair. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Dear Lord Jesus, once again, thank you, thank you, Lord, just for a beautiful, beautiful day. We thank you, Lord, for blood running warm in our bodies. We thank you for life and strength, for getting up this morning. As we move forward today, this afternoon, Father, with our work session, we ask you, Father, continue to have our minds open, each individual mind open, to understand and support the items that support the citizens. And then, Father, we also send out special prayers to our city manager's mother and our council members' wife, that they will not only be healed but full, 100% whole in whatever may be going on in their bodies. We just thank you, Father, and we glorify you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this is our inaugural work session at 2:00 in the afternoon, so we are making a little bit of history here today. So if I could, could I get an approval of the agenda? Motion? Okay, I got a motion to approve by Councilmember Honduras and a second by... Yes.
Mayor Protem, I have a handrail.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Thompson and...
Thomas, Tom, and Dave.
And the mayor are on the phone. Yes.
Yes, I need to table an item on the agenda.
Okay, so...
Removing...
City Attorney, please.
So when we get to that item, Councilmember Davis, you can table that at that time.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right, so...
Mayor Protem, I move the item off the agenda.
Count, I understand that I can't hear because... Councilmember Thompson, we can't hear you. Can you repeat that, please?
I said I would like to remove the item off the agenda.
Okay, so Council...
We can do that, Mayor Protem. I didn't realize we had already taken the vote, so you have your motion and your second...
We have not taken a vote.
Okay. It's showing a little bit on here as a... But that's okay, we've got a motion and a second. Before we take the vote, whoever made the motion, if they wouldn't mind retracting it, so that we can amend the agenda.
Retract, my...
And which item is that, Councilmember Thompson?
Item 4.011.
So Councilmember Honduras, if you would like, you could make your motion with the deletion.
That's Davis's motion, though. Why is Thompson making the motion? So, Councilmember Benevente, with all due respect, Councilmember Thompson, were you wanting to do 4.011, and that was Councilmember Davis's request?
No, my request is the Veteran's Service Live Event.
Okay, so that is 4.010. Is that the one that you would like to remove?
No, mine's is 4.011, the Veteran's Service Live Event.
Excuse me, Mr. Thompson, you have a different agenda than we do. So ours that is here reads 4.010, so if we could amend that, Councilmember Honduras? And just...
That sounds good.
Just read it out, that you're gonna take it on? And we can do them both at the same.
I believe that we approve the agenda, removing 4.011.
0 and 4.011.
It's second by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Any discussion? Ms. McGill, I see you. Okay, so now we need to vote, and I have no idea who's gonna do that. Does Paula do that on here? All right.
There it is.
So we... Councilmember Thompson?
Mayor Protem?
Yes, your vote?
I'm Green.
Mayor Colvin? He's not on. Okay, so that is nine to zero for those present, that's unanimous. All right, thank you. So with that, we will go on to 4.01, the Office of Community Safety Discussion, and I will turn that over to our Chief of Staff, Jody Phelps.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. So the first item on your agenda today is a discussion on the Office of Community Safety, and we have invited Dr. Gerard Tate from the North Carolina Office of Violence Prevention to come and help initiate this conversation with Council and facilitate a discussion. He is one of only a handful of recognized experts in violence prevention and community safety in the nation, and North Carolina is certainly lucky to have him. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Tate now, and we hope you all have a wonderful conversation.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for the introduction. I will start by saying that I'm hoping it will be a discussion. I don't want to be prescriptive. I want to provide you with the best available information that we have, and where you have questions I cannot answer, ensure that we work with local, state, and national experts to get you those, so that whatever you decide that you want to do moving forward and putting together your offices with the best available evidence and best practices that we have available. So I will first say I'm happy to be here. I come from the State Office of Violence Prevention, where we help cities, counties, community-based organizations to implement public health approaches to violence prevention in partnership and coordination with the Department of Health and Human Services. My office is in the Department of Public Safety. We are intentional about that collaboration to ensure that it does not take only a public safety or traditional law enforcement approach, that we approach it from a holistic, public health-informed way. I'm a master's and doctorate-level social worker, and an Army veteran, and a prior law enforcement officer, so I bring kind of two lenses to the table, both law enforcement as a mental health clinician. In addition to being born and raised on the South Side of Chicago, where community violence was and still is a major problem, the majority of my work the last 21 years have been focused on this issue and problem. So I would like to first start and ask, in the spirit of that being a discussion, when you think of the Office of Community Safety, I'm very curious to get a few comments from you and how you want this discussion to be guided in that, what do you think about when you think of the Office of Community Safety? Yes?
So, to make this very long coming...
Yep.
Could we hit our buttons and then I can call on you? Is that okay with you?
Absolutely, and I just need three or four, so that I know that I'm not... Again, I don't want to be prescriptive, there's a lot of things in my head, but this will be your office that you're guiding, and so if you just say, "Give us the best practices," in general, Gerard, I would do that, but I would like to hear at least some of your initial thoughts because...
Absolutely. So if you would like to speak, I can look at you on the podium. I see Mayor Colvin is on. No, that's me. Huh. Sorry about that. But he's on, I got the text, so I just assumed. Welcome, Mayor Colvin.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mayor Protem. So I did have a question, I was, and good to see you, Dr. Tate, apologize, had to do it remotely, but am looking forward to your discussion about some of the best practices, understanding that, you know, it can be tailored to what our needs are, but don't have anything further asked, or give some statements about what their vision of it is, because we've heard it kind of being a one-off catch-all, so we'd like to clarify some of that today.
Okay, absolutely. So, just to be clear, Mayor, can you say it just one more time? So I think what I've heard you say, just to make sure I'm clear, is that it has already been said many times already. I will also ask for two or three guiding... So I will still ask for two or three guiding thoughts on what you think it would be in very short statements, and I will start in best practices towards that. I will preface it by saying, in my prior research on the conversations that have been happening, I've heard co-response, mental health response, violence prevention intervention, some directed services and supports at communities in greatest need, et cetera, et cetera. All of those can be a part of it, and some of them are very separate and distinct, and so I guess what I need clarification on before we start this is, what is the focus? Public health approach first takes a data-informed approach, and so if community and gun violence is the primary focus of the office, that is one direction. If mental health crisis response, which is typically not the leading cause of gun violence, though still very important, that it takes another approach. So I think clarification to me first, when you think Officer of Community Safety, do you think of community and gun violence, or is it mental health and co-response?
So Councilmember Hare?
Yep.
Good afternoon, Doc, and thank you for coming and meeting with us too this afternoon. We have been talking about this agenda item, I don't know, a year or so, and just doing all that we can to better support and help our community when emergency calls come, either as gun violence, well, whatever the criminal act is, and a lot of times, we may, they may receive a call that you think is gun violence, and when you get there, it's something else, or someone is having maybe a mental breakdown, or frustrated about something, but not always where our men in blue that we are comfortable with, or I don't know if the word is comfortable, but more aware of than someone else going out trying to calm the situation down. So my concern, and I already know, I'm not getting it twisted, and I hope anyone else doesn't get it twisted, that the community, the Officer of Community Safety Department is not a one-all, that's gonna cure everything, because as I've said on this item, I've said with other items, this is just another part of our toolbox that we need, and I accept that we do need it. So my question is, like, how does it work? And I'm having these conversations with people, but I'm glad to have you in front of us. I'm gonna give you a call, 911 comes through dispatch, and it says, "The man across the street just came out of the house, and he's screaming, he broke the screen door, he's running around, and he may not have a weapon, but he's acting very, you know, very mean, very violently." Someone from community, our Office of Community Service comes. How does it work? Because you're still gonna need the police. So kind of tell us how that call, the reaction, comes from the dispatcher and everybody else that might be involved.
Yep, so Councilman, if I can, I'll answer that and back up just a little bit.
Yes, sir.
So 911 diversion or alternative response are strategies, are initiatives, are programs that could exist under an Office of Community Safety. And so particularly, the scenario that you are articulating has very much to do with 911 and kind of call diversion or alternative response for mental health responses.
Don't go any further, because I want to stop you. So make sure I'm understanding. So then, are you saying, if there's an issue where it's not that type of violence, gun violence, knife violence, or something, are you saying that it would not be a 911 call? It'd be another phone number?
No, no, so to be 911 diversion, it has to come in to 911 and be diverted somewhere else.
Okay.
I think what you're talking about is having somewhere else, right? So, and I will speak about this briefly, and then I think you'll understand why I'm gonna move on from it.
All right.
So 911 diversion is programs, initiatives, strategies that try to divert calls from law enforcement responders going there first. Typically, you want to make sure that those calls, and they have protocols and other things, we can work in deeper session and bring those people who run some of those programs to you, to ensure that it's not anything related to violence or a weapon. Because as you can imagine, if I am the social worker or the crisis response person responding there, and there's a weapon, who do I have to call? Right? So I think that approach is another topic I think may help guide the discussion. When you think of community safety, Officer of Community Safety, are you thinking of prevention or reaction? Are you thinking of prevention or intervention? Intervention, something is actively happening right now, we have to intervene. Versus prevention, using all the data, information, risk factors that we have to proactively send social, economic, and health resources where we know they're needed the most. And so when you think about Office of Community Safety, they may need to have both of those, but you want to be very, very heavy on prevention. We call upstream approaches. We have data that tells us where most of the violence is happening, where most of the shooting is happening, where a lot of the individuals being arrested may live, play, work, go to school. We don't have to wait for a 911 call to come in if you have a particular workforce intervention or prevention strategy in place. And so at a call like that typically, though not always, it's not the first time a call has come to that specific residence. Sometimes in the 911 world, we call super-utilizers, the same houses call over and over for the same issues, particularly around mental health and stabilization, particularly when they may not have access to medical care and mental health supports and medication. They may be re-entering from prison. So that is one part that could be a part of the Office of Community Safety, but when you think of Officer of Community Safety at a cabinet level, on the same level as a police department or a fire department, that may be one of the things that they do, but you want them to be very focused on prevention, using all the police data, the economic data, the health data, the parking recreation data, to proactively engage with those individuals. So that is one piece of it, and thank you very much for that, and it can be. I would say you want the data to guide you as much as humanly possible, that is, you have years of 911 call data, you have years of data from health departments and others where people are unfortunately being shot and killed. Typically, those particular areas don't move a lot. They typically will pool in certain areas. So certain areas of your city are much more likely to experience gun violence and associated harms than others, right? And so limited resources, you want to use data to focus much more on that. That doesn't always correlate with 911 and mental health calls, though the data is pretty clear that particularly for young people that are exposed continuously to gun violence, particularly in urban settings, they have a higher likelihood of developing mental health, fight or flight, and hyper vigilance responses that may put them at a higher risk for negative encounters with law enforcement. That is, if you live in an area where it's a lot of gun violence, it's gonna affect the way that you act and behave, and recognizing that, we can put prevention pieces in place and prioritize them for services and supports. 911 diversion is one part of it. That answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Are you done? You want some more?
I had another speaker, but if you're not there...
Okay, so you're saying, so if the 911 diversion means that the call does come through the normal format, and then it is sent out to where it needs to go, and the Office of Community Safety could be...
It could be. You could partner with your county, local community health departments, you can... There is a number of entities. You could have a coordinator that sits in that office, that some people may do with EMT, EMS.
I got you, I got you. I understand, thank you.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Dr. Tate, good to see you.
Likewise.
Last meeting was at the Governor's Crime Commission, so thank you for being here this afternoon. When I think about the OCS or things that I want to see, I do like the concept of the 911 diversion, as well as some type of preventative measures, because we do have our officers and our dispatch that shows up to the scene when calls come in. However, I think it's important that we create something that's gonna allow preventative measures, so that we won't... We know our police shows up, you know, show up, but we need to find ways to alleviate the crimes that are taking place.
Yeah, absolutely, so thank you very much.
So if we can come up with something that can tie into...
Yep, so thank you for that. So some of the most effective in this community violence intervention space, though it's been operating for some time, 20, 30 years, the funding comes and goes, and so where there may have been weed and seed in the late 90s, early 2000s, it also unfortunately focused very heavily on incarceration too, and it didn't sustain it. And so if you're gonna develop Officer of Community Safety, it has to be embedded, and your city is a cabinet-level agency, and it has to receive the support that it needs. You're asking it to do a very, very hard job immediately. That should be reflected in staffing and funding. If it is important, that is what, and some of the resources that I'm gonna send you will let you know. The first thing you have to do is have a clear mission and vision, and then staff according to what that mission that you're giving them is, right? And training. So part of my job at the state level is, we have a violence prevention workforce, but there's no training that's really, I would say, holistic enough to do everything that you're gonna ask them to do. My biggest worry, if you don't have a plan and a focus, is there will be a catch-all, and if it's a catch-all, it's not gonna get anything accomplished. And so if...
I'm sorry, and I was gonna say, and to speak upon that too, as far as that's the issues that we had when we tried to do the curfew, not having the right partners in place to make it impactful. So I guess the main thing is having those partners, you know, networking with them to see if we can get everybody on board.
And holding them accountable. So having an Officer of Community Safety, there are juvenile justices at the state level, invest in certain juvenile violence prevention programs and services. Are they serving the youth that we identify and their families in the areas that are most being affected? So when I say you start with the data, if you look at the data where the crime and violence is happening the most, there are typically other, what we call, shared risk factors. There's some social, some economic, some educational, some occupational workforce development gaps there, right? It isn't just that the people, they are more violent or more prone to violence, they are in a situation, a scenario, where alternatives are few, right? And so if you use data to identify where many of those areas are, and, I mean, we can use data, but you can also use some qualitative stuff. If I just ask people right now to write down the top five areas where gun violence and crime is most likely to happen, 90% of you gonna write the same areas. And then if I ask you which area may be suffering from the most amount of concentrated poverty, you're probably gonna list areas that are very similar to that. If I ask you what your best and worst schools are, that's also there too. The good thing about that, taking that data-forward approach is, we're not talking about a large population of individuals who are at the highest risk and highest needs level, who also may engage in community violence. That number is typically going to be really, really small, but they're typically the hardest to reach and least trustful of people in this realm and government, because historically they haven't been served in the right way. And so if you have Officer of Community Safety, it has to have a community, whether it's an advisory board or a group, that is speaking about from those specific areas where you want to focus these interventions on. And again, this is where partnerships around data matters the most, because I think if you look at your gun violence victims and your gun violence arrestees, many of them will be from the same and similar areas. But if I ask where your program, services, and interventions deserve specifically them, they are the fewest. And so if you want to develop an office, have it very tailored to that risk profile.
Councilmember Green?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
The program that I'm most familiar with, because I actually visited, is the one in Durham.
Yep.
So I'm gonna formulate some of the questions, I'm sure you're familiar with it, and I did, I did review online a little bit with the STAR program in Denver.
Yep.
So I'm kind of familiar with those of those processes just on the periphery. So talking about the shared risk factors and areas that have always, already kind of been identified with that, with that, we have three areas that we've already set up with ShotSpotter or Soundmine, whatever they're calling themselves now, and what I'd like to kind of hear from you is, would it be reasonable to consider starting on a small base and working your way outward? We heard from Durham that it took about 11 months to stand their program up after they got the officer, the director in place. It took them that long to train and get his people in place. They started out with a graduated program, I'd kind of like for you to address that too. They did like a Monday through Friday, nine to five, during daylight hours only, to begin with pros or cons of doing that. I definitely like the idea that they are not attached to the police department, but they work collaboratively with the police. I don't think we need to tax the police department with an additional arm to look after. He's got all the arms he needs to look after, in my opinion. So kind of just, I know I just threw a ton of stuff at you, I'm sorry.
No, 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 yeah, I have the footage. So first, thank you for that, and Councilman, along the same lines, the trend and theme that I hear here is co-response for mental health-related calls, which are the two programs that we're talking about here now, as a portion of what an Officer of Community Safety can do. And so my question to you is this, is the focus of this office on community and gun violence or mental health responses?
I believe it's mental health.
And if it's mental health responses, my question to you then is, do you expect to see a reduction in gun violence in the city, or do you expect to see a reduction in mental health crisis calls that end in adverse outcomes?
List of people?
Oh, I'm sorry, this...
So are you...
I'm finished.
Okay, so...
I'm sure he's gonna get...
Oh, yeah.
So there'll be Councilmember Benevente, and then back to Councilmember Hare for a second round.
Yeah, when I look at the kinds of instances of gun violence that we have, I think they're gonna be greatly improved by folks getting help that they need when they call 911, because they are very interpersonal, they are very much DV-related, we have a lot of self-harm happening, and so, yeah, I do believe that of our many gun-related homicides, that if we focus on responding to folks who call 911, not with law enforcement, but with some other type of response, that that is our biggest goal. You know, I'm getting ready to get sworn in to practice law here in Cumberland County Courthouse, and I see so many people who are in that courthouse who could have gotten help if, when they called 911, someone else showed up, but instead it was law enforcement, and they gotta charge, and they gotta deal with that before they get the help that they really need. So I'm trying to cut out that step, where they don't get help until they get in trouble. I want us to address folks that are low in resources, in zip codes in this city where, you know, your life expectancy is lower just because of where you live. Those are the communities that I want us to be responding to when they call for help. Again, not with somebody who's gonna come and arrest everyone involved or in that situation, but someone who's gonna help alleviate the conflict. That's my biggest hope with this. So I'm hoping that, you know, the fact that Durham was able to do that within 11 months of getting established, that that's the timeline we're talking about, and I'm hoping that you can share with us... And I'm hoping that you can share with us how likely that is because my fear is that we end up making this seem like a years-long effort when really it doesn't have to be. The only thing stopping us from getting it done just as quickly is political motivation.
Yeah, so thank you, Councilman, for that. So I will, I will add, so Durham has a city program, HART. They have a county program, Bull City United, that does community violence intervention and a slew of other youth-focused programs and intervention. So I guess this is the guidance that I would like. So the trend that I continue to hear, and I agree with you, that there are many mental health calls and crises that will be, that could possibly be averted from nine one one. My question is, because this is, when you call it an office of community safety, we can call it a co-responder program, a mental health HART program. If you say it's an office of community safety, office of violence prevention or anything like that, you're typically talking about a whole-of-government approach that is much more proactive, much more preventative. The programs that we're talking about are very reactionary, they're very intervention-focused. They can be a part of an office, but maybe the alternative way of thinking about those particular cases they respond to is we have data on the individuals and addresses who may be most associated with those calls coming in. And we can proactively send out right now local community health, community health workers, intervention folks, as well as a co-responder team or alternative approach. My question to you though, and, and again, this, this will help me guide whoever, will you expect to see a city-wide community violence, gun violence reduction? Because HART is not designed, STAR is not designed for group, crew, gang violence, other shootings. And if your focus is mental health response, an alternative for mental health cases, then you may expect to see some positive outcomes related to that. To think that those calls will then somehow also touch many of the young people who may not be calling nine one one for crisis intervention in the first place, I think could be a little bit inaccurate.
So I know that we already have money given to a group called The Prove Project, and there are violence interrupters, they're the ones who are working more closely with PD, sharing with them, you know, folks that, you know, they can work with in that realm as it relates to gang-related affiliated groups and things of that nature. So they've gotten, been given a budget, I think a year and a half, two years ago, and they're moving to a bigger building on Merchant Road pretty soon. So I think they're going to be addressing that for the most part. I'd love for them to become another component of a broader office, certainly, so that they have a little bit more assistance from that, assistant city manager level, you know, project manager who can help make sure that they're meeting their expectations. But certainly we have a gun violence prevention, excuse me, cost of gun violence study coming back. I expect there to be sort of the thinking folks who aren't responding to in-the-field calls. You know, there is certainly some broader strategies I expect that director to present to council for us to work on over the years in that, in that sort of big picture, five years, ten years, what does community safety look like in Fayetteville conversation. I think that every year or every budget that we fail to establish some actual reactive response teams to substitute, what we do with law enforcement though, is us not plugging up a leak. You know, we, we, we've got to start to slow down from both ends, both of the things that are happening right now with nine one one calls, and then certainly with broader strategies that are going to take months and years and bigger budgets to, to address.
Yep. So this goes back to that first data-informed approach. Are you receiving a large number of mental health-related calls where police are first responders that are ending in negative interaction between police and law enforcement? And if that is the case, is that less or more than the number of calls you're getting for broader community violence? And so my, and again, we can, you can say, we want an officer of community safety that has a mental health co-responder unit. My worry is, when you start an officer of community safety, what you call it matters. And if community safety issues start to pop up where the majority of your gun violence is happening, that's not directly related, at least into mental health crises in a traditional way we see it, that that team will go. My worry and my advice to you is your community is going to ask, what is your office of community safety doing about those particular areas and crews and groups and gangs that are doing these things? And I don't think you want your response to be, we do nine one one, mental health diversion, and we're working on that in two or three years. That is to say, if you run your data, where is the violence, how is the violence happening the most? So is it domestic violence? Is it self-harm? Is it mental health? Right? I think those may be in there, and maybe, and your data, those do rise to the top. When I look at your shooting victims and shootings that have been happening, is the majority of them caused by that? And if it is, prioritize that. If it's not, you want to prioritize it where most of the violence, particularly around gun violence, is happening. That is my, and I, and I will be fair and honest, which I haven't dug that deep into your individual data, but I think your data may show, just from what I see at my level, that community violence and crews, gangs, groups, of which some have mental health issues for sure directly related to exposure to that violence, and who are most more likely, if they have those crises, to negatively be impacted by a law enforcement response. So, but if, and it's just, I would say you might need a different name if the primary focus of that will be mental health response and co-response. And so if you say community safety, that is a macro term, not a micro.
I think it's supposed to be a macro term. Gun violence, gang violence, gun violence, or mental health, you know, support, all that is in community safety, we're not calling it the Office of Gun Violence Prevention, in which case if we said that and then all we do is mental health, I think you'd have a point. I think in this case, we're very deliberate about saying this is an umbrella org that will do mental health co-response, that will do broader strategies with the studies that we're conducting to address gang and gun violence, youth gun violence in particular. So what's in the name? Call it whatever you want at this point, y'all. If that's the only thing stopping us from getting three million dollars in the budget this June, you know, if the mayor has some ideas of calling it, you know, whatever he wants to call it, let's call it whatever it needs to be called, but let's, let's fully fund it so we can actually get some people responding to nine one one calls in the next year.
Yeah. And so my, my, I have one more feedback. So you said something that I think resonated with me well, and you said it's, can be a part of that office, right? And I agree with you, it can be a part of it. Nine one one diversion can be a part of it. Community intervention, violence intervention, contractors that you have can be a part of the office. I think what we're talking about now is what you want to prioritize to implement first, and you all may choose that you want to implement a mental health crisis response. First, second, simultaneously, there are models where that is part of the office. But now you are talking about a level of staffing and funding that you're going to have to get comfortable with. So that is my, you asked me for my, I think that in cities that I continue to work and traveling around North Carolina, most of the citizens that pull me to the side are worried a lot about those calls, yes, but simultaneously, equally, and sometimes a little bit more, the young people who are involved in reckless gun violence are in communities each and every day. And so if you want to try to start an office that simultaneously or grows because you may be already funding, I would say I don't think it's a best practice to have a violence interrupter program that is off and aside, kind of on its own, and just fund it out on its own. And the reason that I think that is the case, in addition to what the research says, they need to be very close in contact with government, social services, health services, relocation services, and et cetera. And if they are not, I think that we may be judging their performance a little bit flawed. And so office of community safety can have a program manager for youth violence prevention, program manager for this alternative response, things that we talk about. That office has to have very, at the executive level, close relationships with all of your public safety partners. And so one of the other things that I think have, have been flawed for a long time is we're going to create an office that is far and away from police. Well, except for, for the last two hundred years, the police department has been the one operating in those neighborhoods a lot and has all of the data that you need to drive your interventions, including, I mentioned your lawyer, sir, including the people that they keep arresting all the time that they want proactive preventive stuff sent to. That is, if I go to the chief and say, in your gang unit, who are the top twenty people that we need to direct all our services and support to reduce violence and crime, they're going to know best. And then we can quickly respond and get there. And if we proactively go there before nine one one calls, it is the hope that in working with them, they're not even there for people to call nine one one, get shot or shoot somebody, which of course lessens the likelihood they even have to have an interaction with law enforcement and group violence prevention strategies maybe.
So if I may, I have the mayor on line, been waiting patiently. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Tate, good information. I, I will say this, one, I don't think we fund any department by just picking a number and, and building it up from there. I, I like the database approach, that you have some, you know, continuous chronic trigger pullers that I think play a big role in the safety of our community. I think the judicial branch and law enforcement know exactly who they are. I, I do agree that there has to be a proactive measure that, that we, that we work with partners to put in place, that are a little bit more equipped in, in some of that space. But if we're going to make this a mental health department, I'm with you, and mental health is not the top priority based on number of incidents, there've been some very tragic incidents where police responded, people going through a crisis to get, got put back on the streets, and it ended badly. But how does that equate to the overall number of the, the violent acts that take place? So I like data driving it. It takes emotion out of it, it takes theories and hypotheses out of it, and it helps us put our dollars where it matters. We just don't have three million dollars laying around to say, let's stick it in a department to be able to say that we've overfunded something and we don't know what the true costs are. So I do think building it from the ground up is the approach, the practical approach that, that we need to do, but I would love to see what the data says our specific issues are because our issues may be different from Durham, it may be different from some other communities. What are the calls coming in after the shots are fired and who's pulling the trigger? That's, that's kind of what I wanted to talk about.
So thank you, Mayor. And, and I will say that, yes, I agree, and I think that the mental health calls are valid, and maybe the prioritization is you have a staff member that is hired alongside your deputy, I mean, your executive director, that's a deputy director focused on mental health coordination responses, right? And the reason that I say that is because the amount that you're talking about now, say you want to fund one or two teams that operate Monday through Friday like we talked about now, right? That they won't operate twenty-four seven. But the individuals that we're talking about, and we would use data because maybe it's not nine to five, you want the data about where it's responding first. If you start your officer of community safety focused on mental health things first, the professionals that you typically have to hire for that is very different than ones that will also focus on macro-level interventions that may look at citywide, complete coordination, whole-of-government approaches. In addition to it, your mental health response unit, whenever you form it, has to have very, very, very close ties with the county, the local health department, the federal, juvenile justice, and others. Because typically, people that need that level of response on medication, have an official diagnoses, need wraparound services and support that you want to make sure are in place before. And again, I'll remind, because we brought up Dallas and we brought up Durham, both of them also have county programs that also help with the STAR program and also help with their diversion and, and conversations I just had with Durham. I think that those things are important for sure, but let's not forget that those counties and cities have holistic violence intervention prevention program in addition to the mental health response. It isn't one alone, and my worry is if you focus on that first, again, the data may, may prove me to be wrong, but if you look at your data, I will let that drive what you implement first, and I think you want to make sure that when you develop the office, there is a plan to say, phase one is this, we're funding it, phase two is this, we're funding, and then we're going to do an evaluation, and not an outcomes evaluation. Remember I said this the first time I came up here? You want to evaluate the process and implementation. Was it implemented as it was designed, as the evidence said, before I evaluate if it's an outcome? People always laugh, and I use this analogy so everybody can understand, my grandmother makes a Seven Up cake with seven key ingredients. Seven key ingredients. Well, I was stationed in Italy, I only had four of the ingredients. I put four in and I subbed the other three with stuff that didn't make sense. I made the cake, it came out, did it taste like my grandma cake? No, it didn't. So if the, if the programs and evidence say you need five things in the program for it to be successful, and the other two or three you can change, if you don't want to fund all five and you only want to put three in there, don't expect the outcomes that the other programs have had.
So with that being said, thank you. I do have the mayor, he is not finished, so he would like to speak. Mr. Mayor?
No, I was, I was finished. I was, I was eager to hear some of the other council members' opinion, if, if, if they could just say what their idea of it was, because I know it's become a very loose term that we've thrown out there with, with every situation, but I, I believe it is multifaceted. So I'm just, just listening very carefully to hear what the other council members' opinion is.
Okay, thank you. So before I go to Councilmember here and then Councilmember Benevente, again, I'm, I'm going to give my look of it and my opinion of it. Number one, the office is needed, you know, it is supported, but I do agree that it is, needs to be data-driven. I do believe that, and when Councilmember Benevente and I first had our first conversation, it was talking about data. I do like the fact that you're talking about the youth. If you do look at our data, our youth is in, in trouble, we're, they're in trouble, and I love the, I, I love the fact that that is going to be, that that is something that you're saying for the prevention measures. And I think that if we get it down, that we can see where we need to go with part of the ingredients. I will say, mental health is big too. The, the fact about Fayetteville is, and of course, everybody knows I'm going to say it, we're the largest neighbor to the largest military installation in the world. There's a lot of mental health going on. There's a lot of young families going on. There's, you know, our soldiers came back and they were given drugs to, and that probably they did not need, and now they've taken them back from them. So we have a lot of issues that other cities do not have. But when five o'clock hits here in Cumberland County or Fayetteville, North Carolina, if there is a mental health episode, the only, the only people that will come help is our police force, and that's just not a fair area for us to be. Now, people will say, oh, there's this, there's that, there's this or that. I saw it firsthand, and I couldn't get any help for the person that was in mental health except our police. They were the only ones, and I mean, I went down the list and called everybody. So that's huge for us. So we have to have everything in it, but we need to make sure that we are moving forward. I agree, we need all the ingredients, but I, I do think that the data is something we really need to look at so we can all sit down as a team and decide, you know, but we do need all of them. So thank you for listening to me. Councilmember here, you're next.
Mayor Protem, can I get my?
I, I'm sorry, do you, were you? Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember here, before we go your second round, I'm going to go to Councilmember Thompson and then Councilmember Davis, and then I'll get you two.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Dr. Tate, for the, that presentation, but I believe that mental health is a factor that we need to focus on. The prevention, I think, is key. As a young guy growing up in a, in a big city, I think if you didn't catch them while they were young, then once they got to the times that they were doing what they were doing, it's, it's kind of hard to turn them away. You can have all the programs and all the nonprofits you want to, to give them help, but if they don't use the help that you're giving them, then it's to no avail. I believe also that we should also try to focus on revitalizing these neighborhoods. You kept talking about the hotspots, that everybody can name them in the community, and trust me, we can. But more importantly than that, we can also tell you what they look like. And sometimes when you see the same thing every day, you're going to do the same thing every day. So it goes back to that mental concept. If we can just, and the Bible tells us, you are going to be lost until you have the changing of the renewing of your mind. So let's renew their minds. So let's renew their minds, and hopefully, we can renew their attitudes. What is your thoughts on those ideas?
So I like all of them. I will say, and I'll put my social worker hat on for a minute, in two things. One, I'm a medically retired, one of those veterans from Iraq, and I'm a former hospital social worker at the VA Hospital. So that resonates with me very well. Prevention focused and what those neighborhoods look like and revitalization, all of those things are important. Those things are going to typically take us 10 to 20 years if we start now and put that as part of a holistic program. One to three years, we're just looking at intervention. And so right now, from a mental health standpoint, if I live in a violent environment, as violent is the norm, of course, much of my norm is going to be related to surviving in that environment. That's the way I was growing up. That's the way humans work. We're very resilient and adaptive, but we also adapt to war. And the numbers of gun violence that I've seen around the country is more than I experienced in two deployments to Iraq and some of these neighborhoods. And so I expect them to react and respond in ways that many of them are doing right now. And so when you talk about revitalizing the neighborhood, I 100% agree. But while we work to do that, we need them in a safe space with social, economic, and health services to support them. That is, I can bring them in for therapy today, but if I'm releasing them back to communities where 20, 30 gunshots are going to go off in the summertime in the weekend, I'm going to start from zero when they come back. And so, do you have a safe space for them to go? Do you have group violence intervention programs? Do you have violence interrupted programs to ensure at the days, times, and locations where gunfire is most likely to happen, that the individuals most likely to be shot or doing a shooting are somewhere else that you have developed program services and jobs for? Right? And that's a long way of saying, when you look at your strategy that's data informed, there are shared risk factors against most of those young people in those areas and the supports and services that they need. And so when you think about an office of community safety, it is typically staffed at the city manager or mayor's level, depending on the form of government you have. And the reason for that is because it takes a whole of government approach. Every department head in your city has to be part of the violence prevention plan, every single one of them. And that office needs to have the leverage to be able to call on them to do X, Y, and Z. Because our number one priority is keeping people safe. If they're not safe, we don't even get the money and the tax revenue. And they leave and move. And so, whole of government approach is a term I haven't used yet that is vitally important in where this office sits and what it does for economic development, housing, blight, et cetera, et cetera. And so, mental health is a piece of this office, for sure. But if you want an office that looks to really reduce violence, and some of that mental health crises is not due to being born with a serious mental illness. It's acquired through that exposure to trauma and violence over and over. And if you just focus on responding to mental health calls first, the more and more children and young people are going to keep getting fed to a 911 diversion center because they've been exposed to that community violence over and over. So two things can happen at once is going to be difficult. I hear two things that are both important, mental health responses and the immediate and youth and young adult violence prevention and intervention. That again, one to three years is just intervention. Three to five, you can develop some prevention and neighborhood revitalization system and norm change. We're talking 10 to 20 years. And that's if you can get the people that are sitting in front of me and citizens to say that they're going to invest in neighborhoods that they typically did not and invest in people who were typically not, right? Most of these young people didn't come out shooting guns and being at high risk of being shot. We placed them in environments where they had to survive and they're doing the best that they can. And so, that office needs to be designed specifically to serve that group of individuals that we're talking about. And they have federal grants, you're putting local dollars, I commend you. You already thinking about putting local dollars and bringing me here to have a plan, that's far and away above everybody. There's other help and financing and funding for you, that's my job to get it to you.
Can you repeat that?
There is other funding that is available to supplement what you're already putting forward. But to your point, Councilman, if you don't fund this to the level of importance that you're saying is needed, you're going to have me back here next year saying, what did we do wrong? Well, what you did wrong is you didn't fund it to, you said, this is the mission and this is the scope. And right now, you got a scope that is mental health co-response and violence prevention intervention. That number ain't far off. So, well, you need to prioritize one or the other that's going first and supplement it with some other funding from somewhere else. And we will make sure we get you the report of how much it costs in other places.
Councilmember Thompson?
I hear you good, Dr. Tate, and that's some good food. But what I'm really trying to get to understand is, if you're saying intervention is the key, what do we do to get them to use the programs that we're going to offer so we know that our money's not just going down the drain?
Yep, and I think that's a longer session, but you're absolutely right. And that's where a lot of people fail, and that's where my cake analogy came in. So there are evidence-based programs and services. There are community-based organizations to work in this environment, who I'm working very hard to get the training, to equip them with the knowledge, skills, and ability to take it just from having a heart to do the work to implementing it with science. And so, a lot of times what we see is programs are not being implemented as designed because we didn't partner them with government, university experts, implementation experts that can help them. And so that you put the funding out and it's like, community-based organization, do your best, right? We're not doing professional development and enriching in those. And this is my role and my job for you, bringing in those experts from those cities that are like yours, who have implemented successful programs to help you in designing your implementation and looking at it at each step. And so, I look forward to that further conversation. Once we get along, what is the unified kind of strategy and guidance you want to put down? And what are the one or two things you want to implement first? And then the tough conversation is saying, if you want to do both of these, here's the price tag attached to it. Is it reasonable? And where do you want to start? Because you can't do a citywide at first, that's not going to work.
So before I go to Councilmember Davis, I have a question. As you say, you know, we are going for both of them strong. In your professional opinion, do we have the capacity?
No.
Okay, that's Councilmember Davis?
So, but let me say why. I think we look at other cities and say, they have a heart and a star model, right? And they were able to find clinicians, they're going to staff it, and professionals who may, to do things as fast as you're going to want to do it, you're going to have to take somebody from a program that's already existing right now, right? And so, if you can do that and implement it, that's for, I would also say, if you want to look at the data, and then we come back and have a separate discussion, because then we won't be operating in what we think. We will be looking at the data and saying, here's what a majority of our gun violence is. Now, it might be, again, domestic violence, self-harm, maybe mental health crises calls. And I would also probably guess that many of those calls overlap where you see gun and crew and gang violence and others, too. But not always, especially when we look at suicide numbers, which are also some crisis calls that typically always you want to have mental, I mean, law enforcement there if it's a weapon involved, that's another thing. So you implement the program, the protocols, the response, all of those things, we can bring in experts to help you do. And again, this is your city and council. You may want to implement that first. If that's what you decide to do, it's my job to just bring the people who best know how to implement that to help you the most. My only thing that I'm going to ask you is, you should expect the outcomes to be directly related to the intervention you put in place.
Scope, the scope of what we don't have in office.
To do both at the same time.
With what? With what? Who has a capacity? The city of Fayetteville?
Well, you can fund something, but is there a capacity?
I think you have the funding capacity.
Yeah.
There we go.
No, I'm not talking about funding capacity. I'm talking about the capacity to get it done.
So most cities don't try to implement two brand-new programs in the same office at this scale at the same time, right? That's not a best practice.
And that's the question that I was asking, you know, I'm going to go ahead again, with the elephant. You know, the elephant's in the room. Are we going to try to eat the whole elephant? Or are we going to start getting where we can get something happen?
Who else are you bringing to the table for this meal? That's my question, because...
I got you right now.
Yeah, so, and here's my advice to you. Your county and local health departments need to play a co-leading role in anything you're talking about.
Now, repeat that again, so everybody can hear that.
Mental health response, because you may have a short-term care responder. That short-term care responder is not a long-term therapist and intervention and inpatient facility. And so if you just want to continue responding, but they have to do what we call a warm handoff to a longer-term intervention and support service, who is that? That's at the county, that's the local health department, that's hospitals. So any conversation you having around that, they have to be there, right? If they're not there, then you have a responder program, but how do I make sure they continue to get the intensive case management and psychotherapy and medication support that they need?
Yeah, but I don't think we can wait until everything is perfect for us to move forward.
Yeah, but this is essential. You asked me to come in for my, if you want to start a mental health program, those people have to be there. Because your program is then, I'm a responder. I only respond. And I may reduce the amount of negative interactions, but if I'm not having long-term care and support, first, I would tell you this, both ethically as a licensed social worker, I will never support and openly say anything about supporting these types of program without having a backend support already in place. Because I think you can be doing more harm. That's my professional opinion.
Let's clarify what you're saying, because what I don't want people to hear is that until the county puts in this much money or this many promises, that we can't do anything. Because that's what I think a lot of people probably heard.
So Councilmember Benevente, we have Council...
Hold on, I do want to hit this point, because I'm not saying that.
Okay.
It don't have to be the county. You need some mental health partner. You need somebody that says, in this pilot area, we're willing to support in case, and you might have a local community health center that, a federally qualified health center, which I think you do here. We have Medicaid expansion. Many of the people who are most likely to get called for this now qualify for healthcare. And so, having them in long-term care, when they come in to see after that initial response, my first question in assessing them is how did they get here? What are their prior diagnoses? Are they on any current medication right now? Because if they're not on medication, or they were, and they didn't refill it, then we have a clear reasoning why they may have went back into crises. And our clear intervention is to ensure they're complying with medication and treatment. Because if they're not, then we should expect responses to continue happening. So not saying that the county needs to step up. It would be nice, but you need to have a mental health and a health partner that will be that long-term service provider.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Thank you for coming down here and giving us this lesson on this. My question is directly towards staff. Do we actually have copy of the data, or can we get it, and how soon can we get the data?
We can get the data. Do we have it already?
We're working with our partners at UNC Charlotte to take all this data and put it together into some kind of usable structure and findings and the whole thing. So we have a lot of data, but it's not in a digestible form, other than getting thousands and thousands of records. So interpreting what it means, as Dr. Tate kind of says, looking at it and coming back to what does it look like? We are not in a place where we can do that. We have lots of data, but it's a shorthand interpretation at this point.
Okay, so...
That was all my questions, thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember here, before I go to you, I'm going to go to Councilmember McNair for her first round.
My first round, thank you. I want to say thank you for your approach. Now that you have heard from all of us, you know what we do not know. And I can say that I'm one of those that didn't know a lot about the OCS office. However, I am a stickler for intervention, which I feel that that's where we should start. Because we do this on a daily basis when it comes to our families and the people that we are close to. We see danger approaching, so we can immediately intervene. And I think, you know, with a thought out plan and funding, we can absolutely take this to another level with our professionals and with a clear path and clear knowledge about what it is that we're getting ourselves into.
I 100% agree. Intervention is always first. It's happening right now, and we have to stop it right now. And so, first, I want to say thank you for advocating for the mental health part. As a mental health professional, like I rarely have ever hear that and pushed for so much to be at the top. And so I'm very happy to hear about that. I'll also say, I want to expand the definition and our understanding of mental health crises. I don't want us to think that mental health crisis is just when they call 911 and we have to intervene. There are signs and symptoms that are already happening in homes, that are already happening in neighborhoods, and we need a prevention workforce that can proactively go out there. When some of these young people are acting ultra-aggressive, to me, it's a mental health response, too. I'm overwhelmed, I don't know how to process sadness, so I'm going to be angry. Because that's the only one you let me be. And so when we think about mental health response, 911 diversion is one, but let's make sure that we already there before 911 is even called. Let's use the data to have a workforce that is already in those neighborhoods, that can already see it bubbling up and intervene so a 911 call isn't made. Let's make sure we use the data about where domestic violence is happening the most. If you want to touch on that and child abuse, to send our local county, city, and other partners to do that and to direct our Parks and Recreation or other city services to measure, and also Community Safety should be looking and saying, we have a workforce program? How many people from these neighborhoods are there? You didn't meet the quota. At least 25% from these core areas have to be there that meet this. And that office is looking to ensure. And if we can't reach them, well, that's why we need to develop a strategy to go reach them. Because we know if we don't involve them in pro-social activities and behavior, what the outcomes will be. So I agree with it.
All right, Councilmember here?
Dr. Tate and my fellow councilmembers already know, it took me some time to get here. This item has been discussed on a number of occasions before I gave it my vote for us to move forward. And I still think there's still much discussion that we still need to have because I'm understanding more and more that it wasn't all what I thought it was until you started talking. And then to hear you, you said it on three occasions, what is it that, well, I counted three times. So what exactly is it that you're looking for? And that's a discussion that we still going to have to have. But I do like the thought of what does our data say for Fayetteville? Maybe even just for Cumberland County, because we're going to overlap each other. I'm for that. I'm for us looking at the data, see where the most urgencies are, and then we look at where the money going to go. I just, I'm not pushing that we're going to throw that whole pot of money out there, which, well, you know, I've got some concerns that I need in some other places of Fayetteville. But I'm just saying that we need to look at that data first, and then we build from there. So I'm very much in support now that I'm on board. And I give my councilmember a thumbs up for just drilling it. Sometimes that's how it works. You have to keep putting it out there, keep putting it out there, keep putting it out there. And the little pieces of conversations I've had, this has been the best. This has been the best for me. Now I understand even more. So I'm going to continue to support it. I still, I just believe that we are going to continue to have to have discussions. Now, my question is, for communities that have this, with all the other tools that they have, can you tell us what does the measure of suc... can you tell us what does the measure of success, if you, if we can call it success, but the, the measure of better in those communities that, where these, this type department has been used with the other tools that they have?
Yeah, so I will go short-term and then kind of mid. So one to three years, one to three years. I would say 12 to 24 months you want to measure by. Are you, the first year, are you actually standing up the offices and implementing like you designed it? So I just want to level set expectations. You can start an office and staff at whichever one of the programs you want to do first. It's gonna take time for training, staffing, developing protocols. You're gonna have additional conversations about when you respond, when you don't respond, safety, all of those things. So in your first year, are we implementing and standing up things in a way that we should? And probably towards the end of that year, are we actually starting to put boots on the ground and intervention is actually occurring? So I would say that first year, depending on how quick and how experienced the person you have that come in, you want to start looking at people. We talking about people here and places. But your first two years, you want to look at how many of those who we identified as being at the highest risk? And we can bring in all the experts to do high-risk, high-need assessments, particularly for gun violence and whatever other harms you say are being served? And how many of those are actually being arrested, being killed, calling for 911 calls and services? That is, for the individuals that we are giving treatment and interventions to, how effective is their treatment to individuals? As you move past that first and second year, you can start looking at group and place. Have we engaged with enough people in those places to start to change the trajectory of violence and stuff in those places? You will most likely not see, though it's not abnormal, I would say, I couldn't statistically say that it's gonna be directly related to your interventions. It may be a whole of government thing. I don't expect to see a massive reduction in violence in areas that they working in year one. Because the first three or four months, they just getting hired and onboarded. Right? And so you're really talking about in three quarters. There are some programs, if you start with, again, you get people from other places who are doing some of the co-response thing, who are doing some of the, the leadership and violence intervention. They can speed up your timeline for sure. You definitely want to do that. And given the urgency and the, the ability for you to fund and staff it, I think it can work. I will say, and I won't name the city, I cut my teeth in this work in a very large city who had almost unlimited budget, and that didn't help. And so I had to come in year two and develop an evaluation methodology. And what happened is we put too much money, hired too quick, scaled too quickly. Now, community-based organizations were used to getting that funding, and it was very hard for us to rein it back and hold them accountable for doing successful work that we didn't provide the training and support for. Now, I learned lessons there, and I'm here to help you from the state level to not do that again and save time. But you have to invest in the workforce. So investing in offices one thing, and it should be done, and you absolutely 100% need this sooner than later. But the people that you hire, you have to invest in. So if I go to the fire department and the police department, and I see they have continuing education, they have a police academy, they have equipment, they have supplies, and they have all this. And I come to the officer of community safety, and you sending them out to say, "Do your best. You from the community. Good luck." Well, that's the outcomes you should expect. And so there's upfront costs, there's sustainable costs, but if it is a priority to you, and if it, because it affects economic development too, it affects influx in business coming in too. Everything is around safety. You make it safer, you attract more people to live and businesses. You better afford more. I'm not telling you things you don't know. But there's a small percentage of young people who have been forgotten about for a long time. There's an old African proverb, "You don't invite them in a village to feel the warmth of the fire, they're gonna burn down your village to feel warm." So how, how quick are you gonna call them in and help them feel welcome and warm?
So, Councilmember here, are you, are you done? So before I go to Councilmember Benavente, I do have a question. We, we're talking that we have all this data that we have brought, and UNC Charlotte is working with that. Do we know when we might get that back? Because I, I feel that we need to have something before, you know, we start talking budget.
Yes, ma'am. If it, if it pleases counsel, we'll have staff go and pull specific information and provide it to Dr. Tate.
Awesome.
So that he can analyze that. We'll continue to move forward with the UNC Charlotte study as well, which will just help augment the research that Dr. Tate does. And we'll get him back for another, either special meeting or another work session so that you guys can discuss and he can present the analysis that he does and we can move forward.
I'll pause and say, I will review the data and do a preliminary analysis. I will bring in a national partner that's funded by the DOJ to do an in-depth analysis, but it may take as long as UNC's that. So we should talk in another session in depth about maybe some preliminary things you can do sooner than that before the full analysis comes out and see if it can meet the needs that you have. Because I don't want you waiting to make some decisions that can be made now for a full in-depth analysis. There's one other thing that I, I would be remiss if I did not say. The programs that have been the most successful in these offices have a very close partnership with other public safety entities. That is, I think you would be wise to ensure that your police department, sheriff's department, fire, EMS, and all of those are key partners and not adversaries of an office like this. They are gonna be the two and three professionals who are out in those areas the most. They need to have a great working relationship. Even if you want to see change in behavior in any of those, more time spent around each other can promote that behavior change that you see, training and collaboration. That is, you want your police department making a lot of referrals to your officer of community safety instead of arresting them. That can only be done with a very close relationship. And that doesn't mean that the violence interrupters and others have to always be meeting with law enforcement and the things that other people are often afraid of, but that at executive level should be planning, that person should be at ComStat, and the chief of the office should be talking about sharing information and data and what it looks like.
So as I go to Councilmember Benavente, when I circle back, I'm gonna ask that we call a special meeting to have you back. And that whole meeting is all about that, so we can, so we don't make the mistake that we're waiting. Councilmember Benavente?
Yeah, I kind of just wanted to clarify a few things, because the UNC Charlotte cost of gun violence study is something very separate, I think, from the data that we discussed wanting to have in order to move our office community safety forward. I think we already know, because we crunched a lot of that data that got us to where we said we're putting microphones around Smith Rec Center, we're putting microphones around Massey Hill Rec, we're putting microphones around Clifdale Rec. We've crunched a lot of this data, and this data is available. So Assistant City Manager Olivera, when you said that you're gonna be able to get this data together, we're talking the next month tops, correct? We're not talking about some extensive protracted period of time, are we?
Absolutely not, no, sir. It will be pulled quickly.
And then, you know, a comment was made, I believe by the mayor, about this $3 million being arbitrary. It's, it's not an arbitrary number. There's a lot of programs that have gotten us to where we can say, the five ingredients to making a delicious cake, if you want that delicious outcome, it's gonna cost this much money. So these aren't arbitrary numbers. And when we talk about our budget, right now, our public safety budget is technically a third of the entire budget. The police are operating off of $65 million, so we can take 1% of our entire budget, $3 million, and utilize it towards this without any problem. Especially because we're talking about an equipped and experienced director that is really gonna be able to bring this about. And Dr. Tate, this is where I want you to address an issue for us, because we got really close to having someone come in, and then we sort of fumbled on the five-yard line. And I'm sure you already know this, because it's not the first time you've done this for a city. Everything that you're saying today is gonna be interpreted like the Bible for the rest of us, our discussions over the next six months. I'm gonna say that Dr. Tate said it this way, someone else is gonna say you meant it that way, so I'm really needing you to clarify some of these points. An equipped and experienced person who has already set up an office was offered the job to come down here. And the big reason they refused to come, of the many, was that they didn't have a runway to take this plane off of. And they weren't gonna come into a city where they were gonna have to be gnaw, scratching, and fighting for every dollar. So can you tell us about the importance of fully funding office community safety so that we can get an equipped and experienced person? Because when you talk about, no one is looking at the shared risk levels of some of these communities. Our city staff aren't gonna be the ones to do that. The director of office community safety is. When you talk about all this data that everyone wants to see before they do anything, no one's looking at the data because we don't have a director of an office community safety. So it's kind of a chicken/egg situation, what comes first? Because we can't have all this data if we don't have the person crunching the numbers. And we can't have this person unless they have the money to set up an office. So I think it's very easy for people who don't want to make the investment this year to find an excuse not to. But we also have the same, based on the same passages that you're sharing, exactly the same reasons why we should fully fund it in order to get a director to continue to work on all this data. Can you try and clarify your position on all this?
The person that you want, I probably know, and is probably closest in my social and professional network. And until you get the stuff we talking about straight, I wouldn't advise them to take it. Because most of the ones that I know that you're gonna want to get down here, who inquired to me when a job was even out at first, asks about budget, how the council gets along, what the city is doing, and if they really want to make a difference. And so that experienced person is gonna, got experience through a lot of getting hit and beat and scratched and, and going through a lot of the things that they're not trying to do anymore to add more stress to their life and move into a new place. And so I'm here to go through some of that scratching and clawing so that they don't have to. But I want to make sure, and I'm most excited, let me say this. A lot of the cities that I've been to, this is the one I'm most excited about the possibilities, because I see people that are truly invested in wanting to do it. You have a city staff and a chief and others who welcome me in with open arms and say, "We want to do X ones." You let us all get on the same accord. So I think it will be an amazing opportunity for them. But looking at the issues that you want to address, the person that you're gonna want to come in, is gonna be able to hit the ground running, only if they're gonna need a data analyst. I already talked to them about this before. That executive does not have time to be coming in and doing all of this data analytics, the same as you and the ex-chief to go do his own data analysis. Where's my report? Go to ComStat, get it back, so that I can go engage with all the other city and county leadership and the state to make those things happen much more quickly. And so this one, the investment has to be made. Again, you may be wanting to match it, and I'm gonna put this on your radar, and I talked to city staff about it already. There are CVI grants and DOJ grants that you should be applying every year, every time. We should be developing strategies right now to apply for those. In addition, you talked about health and mental health. You should be having conversations with your local health departments about what grants they're applying for and what we can partner with Officer of Community Safety and those entities to get even more staff for that follow-up and long-term care. Right? Because they're gonna say, "We don't have staff." You start making all these referrals, they're not gonna have the staff and capacity to support it either. So you need somebody thinking downshift. And I'm sorry, go to your next point. Yeah, you can get it done by June, for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. So I have a quick question, because I know we gotta move on. Have you seen success with cities using OCS and ShotSpotter? And I'm asking because some of the neighborhoods in my community have been asking for ShotSpotters, and the one that has it has seen much success, and they like it in their neighborhood.
So this is where I have to put a disclaimer. My employer, before I came here, I was the Director of Community Impact and Engagement at ShotSpotter, AKA Sound Thinking now. I came here directly from there. So I think what you will find is, my tenure there was developing strategies for non-law enforcement entities to use that data. And so I would rather talk to you about that a bit more in private, because I don't want to promote any one thing or another. But I would tell you that there are a lot of things, if you just Google my name and that company, I think you will see what my stances are on that particular product.
So as we wrap this up, I appreciate everybody's patience. This is a very important challenge that we need to work through. And I think you have done a tremendous service to us that we are all thinking outside of the box. And I think that we can do this by June, especially with your help. And the biggest thing that I, I heard you hear a lot of things, but the second thing was, people are looking at us of how we get along. And I know that is very important. So I'm very excited about you being here, because I think that you are going to show people that Fayetteville really wants this, and we want to move this forward. Mr. Mayor, did I hear you on the phone?
And Mayor Protim, if I could, to talk to Tate again, I echo that. I just did want to say that beyond a shadow of a doubt, I think that it's clear that 10 of us have prioritized violence in our community that's been a problem, and we want to address it. We support it. This has been one of the many mechanisms. I do think to Councilmember Benavente's point about cooking the cake, about the 7-Up cake, we have to know whether we're cooking a cake, or we're cooking muffins or pie. And I think that's what the data's gonna serve us, to get a roadmap.
Absolutely.
We know we need something to eat, but we just can't start throwing ingredients in a bowl when we have no idea what we're cooking. So I do appreciate you coming today, look forward to it, and look forward to working with council to get this done.
Yep, absolutely. My last part and advice, taking in small bites and muffins. Don't try to cook the whole cake at first. You're gonna do it in pilot areas. Some of the analysis have already been done. I think you may want to put in some safeguards to say, once you reach a certain point, then we will continue to scale, because I think you may run into problems with scaling it and investment longer term if you don't have a plan for that upfront, but thank you.
Again, thank you, and we look forward to our special meeting with you and your colleagues. Thank you. All right, do we want to take a five-minute break? Let's take a five-minute break.
Well, I have people saying yes.
All right, counsel, do we have the attorney here? Ma'am, if we could, 4.03 and 4.04, they have to go, they have a meeting, and they were wondering if there was any way that we could move them to the end of the agenda so they could go do their conference and then come back?
At your discretion, Mayor Protem.
Okay, can I get a motion for that to happen? I got a motion from Councilmember Harris, second from Councilmember Davis. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Green.
Thank you. Okay, we're good to go. So with that being said, we are going to go to 4.02, and I'm sure we will not take an hour and a half on this. Well worth the time.
I promise you, this is not going to take anywhere near that amount of time. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yamil Nazar. I am your Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Director for the Human Relations Department. I'd like to introduce my chair and my vice chair, who will be presenting to you today. And then they will be followed by Mr. Stone, who is our Construction Management Director. Mr. William Milton is a retired United States Air Force veteran who served from '73 to '06. After the military, Mr. Milton retired from the County of Solano in Northern California in '16. He then moved to Fayetteville, North Carolina, and was appointed to the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission from '18 to '22. After a brief break, he was reappointed in '23 and is now serving as its chairman. Demetria Murphy currently serves as the Vice Chairwoman of the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission. Ms. Murphy is a local advocate and founder of the nonprofit Youth Diverse Intervention Group and co-founder of Brains Over Bullets. Additionally, she is the co-founder of HIL, the bill, an initiative aimed to educating community members on gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Mayor Protem and City Councilmembers. I'm Bill Milton, and I am the current chairperson, no, I say chairperson, of the Human Relations Commission. And I'm so glad to be here. Once again, I've been on the commission for about five years. And this Market House project has been one of our biggest challenges. And with that, I would like for any past or present members of the Fayetteville Human Relations Commission to stand. Thank you. And there's about 15 or 16 of us, but you know, we work really hard. And without any further ado, I'd like to introduce my vice, and she will go through the slideshow.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, all the city council members that are present, and the commissioners who are also present. I am going to work my best through this presentation I just received, so you guys bear with me. Can you guys hear me well? Okay, so as of April 15, 2011, during a regular meeting, the city council directed the human relations staff to move forward with repurposing the Market House as well as to host a city spirit and gathering Community Input Day. August 1, 2022, during the work session, we discussed community engagement results, the Market House program to include history, art, spoken words, also to look at Black History Month, Hispanic History Month, Indigenous and Asian-Americans, and Pacific Islanders. We also discussed what the plaque will read, the new plaque. I would like to read that to you verbatim. "In memory and honor of those and formidable people who were striked of their dignity when enslaved and sold as slaves at this and other places in our community. Their courage in that time is a proud heritage of all time. They endured the past so that the future could be won for freedom and justice. Their suffering and strength afforded the opportunity for future generations to be recognized as citizens free to live, work, and worship in pursuit of blessings of liberty to ourselves and prosperity." That is what the new plaque will read. October 2023, options were presented to city council. November 23 through January 2024. Litstorm or Lenstorm received a complete site design. March of 2024, this design was presented to the Historic Resource Commission. They had 30 days prior to that meeting. From April to August of 2024, they bid it on the documents. The city did the RFP. The bid was reviewed, it was, a contract was created, and city council reviewed and approved that contract. The purpose and scope, the Market House, is to preserve and revitalize the history of Fayetteville Market House and Square. The project includes improvement from the ADA access, pedestrian safety surrounding the building. Upon completion of this infrastructure, the Market House will be a venue for historically accurate education, information, multicultural exhibits, activities, with the emphasis on African-American contributions. Within those parameters, we're looking at the physical scope of the Market House, Market Square. The state funded, provided $1.5 million. Additional funding may be available. We must improve the pedestrian's safety in the traffic circle and approve the ADA access, the deliverables. We're going to design that concept to include improved ADA access, bid documents, contract selections, and site preparation, demolition, beautification, final inspection, and the final report to hand over to the city. When we look at the finances, the budget was $1,500. The current balance is $1,417,125.50. The current expenditures are $82,874.50.
Ms. Murray, let's go back. The budget was 1.5 million.
I'm sorry, 1.5, yes. It was a typo here.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yes, and so then the current balance is $1,417,125.50. And the current expenditure is $82,874.50 as of September 9, 2023. Do you guys have any questions?
Do I have any questions? All right, okay.
Okay, so I will be turning it over to this young man. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I'll pull the.
No, go ahead.
Pull the. All right, so you do have the presentation in front of you. So you should be able to make sure everyone else can see it. Yes, sir. All right. One of the things, if you remember what was mentioned, when the consultant did the study, one of the big items with this, with the Market House repurposing was the safety for pedestrians. And so take that in mind when we look at these pictures. So here's the current picture. You're very familiar with the Market House from the aerial view. So there was two options that the consultant came up with. The first option, and right now, again, with the budget where we're at, you're looking at a range because really until you get into the details and really get into the documents, that's why the budget is, this one's $500,000 to $800,000. So you'll see the inside circle to be enlarged to the limits of the existing street mural. So what you're doing, you're pushing the bricks out where the existing mural is. So it gives you more room on the inside of the circle. So the extended area will be brick paver and/or sidewalk to accommodate the future mural. Crosswalks to be traffic-rated, concrete brick pavers on a concrete bed and border, six-inch roll curb over edge, drainage modifications accommodate a new curb edge, and then programmable LED in-ground lighting installed. And this option has the least impact to the existing traffic flow. And the next picture will show you what that looks like. So what has happened, if you'll go back, and I can back it up to the previous one, but what happened, the inside brick piece of the circle was pushed out further to give you more area to actually do some of the programming that was mentioned previously. And again, the crosswalks, deliberate places for the crosswalks. And one thing, it happens when you narrow that lane, it has a tendency to slow your traffic down a little bit. So that's part of that, is to slow the traffic down in the circle. And then option two, or option, I'm sorry, project option B, around the same range, 700 to 800. So you have to actually mill and pave some of the, mill the existing railway and pave about 4,400 square foot square around it. And so your arcade extended from base of steps, and we'll explain that as we get into it a little more. You add your ADA slopes, and then again, a six-inch roll curb edge, drainage modifications to accommodate it, and then crosswalks to be traffic-rated, concrete brick pavers on a concrete bed and border, and then add stop bars and directional arrows. And you'll see why that's needed when we pull up the picture, as well as 12 to 16 removal security bollards to help keep pedestrians safe and reinforce where the traffic needs to be going. And again, the same LED in-ground lighting installed. And then the corners will receive two quad-arm cast iron light fixtures to match the Hay Street, Person Street. So again, bringing those same fixtures in than you had before. So here's a view of the recommendation on Plan B.C. What it does is more of a circle. It creates a more of a square for the entire Market House arcade area. And so again, the expectation is for this to slow traffic down to provide more of a safer area for pedestrians to cross. You bet. And that was it? That's the last one, actually.
So option B, and yes, you have changed it and configured it to more of a square. So whenever the cars drive, are the cars going to be allowed in this site? Are they?
Yes, sir. Both of these options do remain the traffic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, maintain traffic inside the, around the Market House.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Benavente.
I was going to make a motion to proceed with option B.
Could I get a second for that? Okay, do we need discussion? Councilmember Honduras.
What's vote no?
Any other conversation? So I have something to say. I like, I like option B, and I'm going to tell you why I like option B. We're trying to bring people down to stay, play, fay. We've expanded the footprint of that area. And the reason why I'm understanding we are expanding it is for people, it's more room for people to gather. Is that correct?
That is one of the, absolutely. That and to also slow the vehicle speeds down inside, around the Market House.
So we are going to slow down the process. I can see that we have done a lot of work downtown, getting people to move, walk, go from place to place. And I just, you always see people sitting all over on the steps and things. But I think that this is a great opportunity to have people, you know, walking through. So that was, Councilmember Harris, did I see your hand?
Yes, you did. I'm all for, because all of us, we deal with concerns of speeding in our neighborhoods. And when I look at option B, apparently you're saying that that is going to be narrowing down the drive space, right? My question was, do we have, and it's nothing you got to look up, but with our police here and our chief here, have we had any kind of data with mishaps or somebody was hit or things along that line within the courthouse going around the traffic circle? I mean, but I do understand us, I'm for that too, as far as trying to slow the speed down. Had it been any issues?
We had four or five thunderbenders in the past quarter.
Four or five, in the last, say that again, please?
Four or five years.
Oh, four to five years, okay.
And I'm not aware of the studies.
No, I'm with it. But I can, I can support option B. Mainly just due to the fact of slowing down speed, slowing down drivers.
All right, anybody else? Can we take a consensus vote on the motion? Oh, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Davis, I'm sorry. Okay.
You first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so Councilmember Davis Honduras McNair.
When you guys did your, I'm under impression that you guys talked to the community about this somewhat?
Several times.
Okay. Which option was the most looked at for the, for the Market House? Like which option?
These were the two options that provided, stay within the budget. As far as the community, I'll have to defer.
And so option B is more pedestrian safe?
Well, both of them are trying to do the same thing. I think option B actually gives you more space inside the, inside by the, around the Market House than the previous one.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Both do the same thing where they're looking at narrowing the lanes. It does, option B did seem to narrow the lanes a little bit more. Again, that's one thing, we could get into the specifics once you got into those areas.
Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Stone, as the construction subject matter expert, on option B, can a tractor-trailer make that turn?
That is a good question. We would run that, we would actually run the truck templates through that to make sure if that's something we wanted to make sure happens. One of the things, I know, one of the reasons, yeah, that's part of, I think there's some. No, sorry, you're fine.
A lot of state streets, unless they're actually doing business, they're not even allowed. So are they allowed?
Well, that was my next question because I know Pawn and another, another of the restaurants there get deliveries from their food purveyors that aren't necessarily tractor-trailers, they're just a box truck. I just don't see them traversing. Option B, you're going to have, you're going to be repairing it annually.
I can tell you what's done on smaller roundabouts that you see. The inside track of that is usually reinforced concrete, so the trucks can put their wheels up on it if they need to. That's what it's there for, so they're not running outside the actual curb line. Most time, the inside curb on most roundabouts. On this particular item, we'd have to, again, we'd have to lay out a schematic.
Right, but if you put, that's option A. If you put, which is the one I like, which is why I like, if you go to option B, there's no way a 24-foot box truck can make that turn without getting on the curb somewhere.
And then that's the other thing, that's the other thing, there's other options.
I don't own the restaurant there, so I'm not the one getting deliveries or not.
But to answer your question, there are other opportunities for vehicles to get to the areas without having to maneuver the. But to answer your question, there are, there are other opportunities for vehicles to get to the areas without having to maneuver the, the square, or the market house.
So Councilmember Honduras, are you done? Are you sure you're done? Okay. Next will be Councilmember McNair.
Yeah, you guys may have answered this already. We have two lanes presently, right?
Well, actually, it was reduced to one lane with the mural. But it's still a wide lane in there, and we can back up to the, actually, you can see the. So this is the existing configuration.
Okay.
Currently. It's just, again, that we, we're expanding into the mural area for, to give the, actually more space in there to do the programming. And also, part of that is to also narrow those lanes a little bit to.
So you narrowed it down to just one lane?
Absolutely. It's still one lane now?
With both projects?
Yes.
Okay. I guess. I mean, the circle looks nice and the squares look nice, but.
Okay, so.
I'm good, I'm good.
You good? Okay, so as Councilmember Honduras was speaking, which is good that we're listening to everybody, then the question was in the back, that I heard back here is, what about a fire truck? Even though I like B better, we want to be safe. So am I to assume that the needs will be more with B than they will A?
The needs for, I'm sorry.
The fire truck.
From what I understand, we, they, they, everything, they were consulted to make sure they could reach everywhere that they needed to with these changes, either side.
Okay, we can take a consensus vote, and then I'm sure there, there will be more questions asked. So yes, I think those are some questions. So can I take a consensus on the motion? Would you like to repeat your motion? Are you gonna?
Just waiting for turn to green. Yeah, really, really quickly, is there a way for us to share when, because this is not the first time we've seen these photos. In fact, we discussed with the consultant, can you share again the date or about when we started this process? Give or take?
Go all the way back.
And the reason I want to highlight this is that this is something we've been working on for a while. April of 21. Yeah. We've been working on this for a while. I just want to make that clear for the public. I move that we proceed with option B as it relates to the redesign around the market house.
Okay, I have Councilmember Benavente with the motion and Councilmember McNair with the second. So if I could get, we just do a consensus with hands. Option B? Oh, it's on here. She got it up? Councilmember Thompson? Okay, and I know the mayor's not on. So we have five to three, so that passes consensus. I'm sure that this will be brought up again when it comes to us. Thank you. And thank you to Human Relations for all your hard work. I will say that is probably one of the most busiest, is the busiest boards and commission that we have, and we appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you. So then let's move on. We are gonna go to 4.05, the Parks and Recreation Projects Report Card. We skipped two, we moved two, we moved two. Yes, sir. We had to move 4.03 and 4.04 right after break. It's going to the end of them.
All right. Good afternoon again. Rob Stone, the Construction Manager, Construction Management Director. So we'll roll, roll through these fairly quickly. Introduction, just to talk about what we've done so far, the big projects. We'll go through each one of those and also the completed projects. So the good news is we'll add a few more of these here on the next one, on the next slide. So these are the ones that have been done in the past using the Park and Rec Bond project funding. The first one we're gonna talk about is Bill Chris Center. As you'll see on the notes, that project is complete. So this one will be moved to the completed projects on the next slide around. So that's a very well-accepted, well-used facility that has, that was, if you were there at ribbon cutting, you know there was a lot of people there. It was really surprising to us. It's a really great facility. We did have one item that we finally got worked out. There was an issue with the shower not draining properly. We've worked with the, the general contractor and finally we were able to get that completed. So the next senior center on, on, on hand was the Senior Center East up there on Murkison Road, Murkison Road and Filter Plant. This one is very, very close. They're actually past due when they were supposed to be open. So we've had some supply chain issues. We had some issues with some windows being delivered. And I actually, when I went by the site today, I actually saw them sitting in the yard. So they finally got those in, the final windows. And there was some exterior cladding that had issues. So the big item that was just completed was having the, the pool field. So it is done. So we're looking at substantial completion sometime, hopefully the middle of this month. So we'll be looking at, as we go through that, to, as long as there's no other items that are outstanding during the ribbon cutting. So we'll definitely be working whatever we want in the next few weeks to get that planned. So any questions on the Senior Center East? The next one there is the MacArthur Road Sports Complex. As you know, this was on some property just inside of Fort Bragg, right off of 295. The project, we went for a, right now, there's a three and a half million, I'm sorry, approved budget was three, lower than three and a half million. There's almost three in there right now, 2.8 million after design. We have shovel-ready contract documents. As designed, the estimate right now with those fields are 13 million. The full build-out with an additional wagon wheel of fields, as well as additional parking in there, is about 19 million. And remember, this is almost a 75-acre site. So we, you know, we submitted for a particular federal grant back, and we found out we did not get that back in June. So we're looking at putting together some other additional funding sources, and I know Ms. Phelps has been looking at a few as well. So we will hopefully have some news on this one that we can bring, good news. But right now, it's just, as designed and as, and amount of fields that we need to make this a working tournament-type playfield, we, we don't have that funding available at the moment, so. Any other questions on that one? So move through on the Masrick Tennis Center. The first slide here is talking about the site work, the lighting, and the tennis courts. So we split these up in the, in the separate contracts. Right now, the site work, if you'll see the, the amount of, of funding that was available and where we're at on the funding. The site work and the tennis courts are approaching completion. Right now, the tennis courts are, are due to be done right now by contract next month. We had to, because of the, some of the site work, we had to delay the site work a little bit, so we wouldn't have some overlap. So we're not tearing out work as we're doing the, as they're doing, as they're doing the tennis courts as well as the building itself. So the lighting is, if you've been by there, lighting is up. The conduit was done as part of the site work. You can definitely see where the, where the field, where the tennis courts are going. There are pickleball courts. I know that was a question up in the far right corner. There's some pickleball courts up there. But as you'll see, the, the picture below on the, on the, on the corner down there, that is the, the championship court. So you have your other, other standard courts, and this is a stand, a championship court where you'd have to play. So it's by itself there by the tennis center, so. And then the next piece of this is actually the tennis center itself. What happened with this, if you'll remember, when we got through with this, this was right in the middle of the time, and we saw such a heavy increase in the inflation for these type of projects. So when we put the building out for bid, it came back over bid. So we worked with the designer as well as the, the G, the general contractor that had, was actually low bid. We never did a contract with them. They suggested going to a pre-engineered metal building, and that would save us somewhere between 300, $250,000, $300,000, as well as some additional value engineering we could get, thought we could get that down a little bit to get it down to where we had our budget. So we paused where we were then, started a new process of designing for a pre-engineered metal building. So that takes a little while, because we were starting from scratch. So now, and even the, the designer took a little longer than we were, we were hoping for. So we're just getting back now into the design, we're finalizing that design. And I can tell you, the, the design was not, was not as attractive as the original design. So we're going back and talking about that, trying to make this building. As you see that picture in there, that's what Mr. Gibson had envisioned, and that's what he was looking for. And the pre-engineered metal building design that they firsthand had us was, did not look that nice. So we're back in there. So we actually have about 90% plans in hand now. And we'll be reviewing them as a city, all the departments get together to make sure these plans are finalized, including our IT items, our security items, make sure all the finishes are where they need to be. And so once we are there, have that finalized, we will have to put that back out for bid. And so once we do that, then our process, we're probably, it, we'll put it back out for bid for about a, about a month. And then it takes about a month to get that contractor onboard. And then we're looking at somewhere between 12 and 14 months to have it completed. So the good news is we'll have the tennis courts actually done, and we'll be able to be playing tennis out here, even while the building's being completed, so.
And I was glad to hear that the prefab building, I mean, I like them, but I don't like them for this look. So this exterior is gonna be, will it be plaster on the outside?
What you're seeing there is pretty much what we're going for.
And what is that? Because I don't, it doesn't really show.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a glass front. It's like a storefront. It's mostly glass. So you will be able to see in and out of that.
Okay, I've got it open.
Yeah, if you can, you may, I would say you may need to expand that a little bit. But it's mostly, especially the, the, the tennis center itself, the locker rooms. That's everything on the left side, the locker rooms and the, and the, the other pieces of the facility. That'll be some type of cladding. We'll, we'll have that. Once we get the, the plans down and everything matches what everyone's looking for, the look, per the architect, we'll have a better idea of what that is.
And way to go, way to go, Mr. Gibson. You know, this is gonna be one of our show, one of our showplaces, especially when we get, we hope to get these tournaments and people coming in from across the country. So, good luck, sir. You've got five more years on your contract.
All right. And then moving to Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center, you see the pictures there, this project is actually complete now. So we, we're waiting to do the final pieces of work order, so we can close that work order and some final payments. But as you remember, that was a ribbon cutting, so this will be added to the completed list as well. Y'all are very familiar with that, with the visit last week, with the strategic plan meetings, a very nice facility. And then we have the Mabel Smith Park. You see that picture there is the latest one in the center that we have with the contractor doing work. We have had a few challenges with this particular contractor as we're working through those. This was a prefab building. It was where you, it's called SIPs plan. And our contractor apparently did not have as much experience as, as we had hoped with this type of building. So we're working through those. Right now, the, the completion date for that is May, is in May. So we got a few more weeks on that one, but, so it's moving along now. And then we'll move into the Cape Fear River Park. As you know, this is one that we did not have the amount, the full build-out for this was over 9 million. But the way the designer designed it was in phases. And so we have started conversing back with the, with the designer to get us plans adjusted within our budget right now. We have a little less than 2.3 million in that budget. You see some of the items here. One of the key items on this one was access to the water. Mr. Gibson, Frontier Wildlife Office, NC Wildlife Office, we met them on site. So we're expecting some information back from them to see what that looks like as we move through. And then some more passive items on the, on the park itself, with some improvements to the parking lot out there in partnership with the, the local church over there to, to utilize that as a, as a partnership. And then some other items that we can get done within that, with that, within that budget. So we should be implementing that design here, finalizing that with that particular designer to, to bring that up, so we can get those contract-ready documents, so.
Using the church's parking?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Gibson has, has had some conversations where we improved that parking lot, so that they have, it makes it better for them as well. Then, you know, most of the time, their services would not coincide with the, you know, on the Sundays, of course, they would have priority for their services. But that way, the, the park could be used without having to construct another parking lot in that area.
Is it, does it have finances dealt with it where the, the church gets any finances for those days? Or, or time? Did it get any support that way?
No, sir. What we would do is, I don't know if you've ever seen that corner where Broad River, North Broad comes over? We would then, yeah, we would then extend it all the way over. And then we would have parking going down the side, and then we would improve their parking lot with lighting, repaving it. That would be, that would be the cost. That would be the upgrade.
That's good, that's good support for it. Okay, thank you.
And then moving to the, the last one that's on this list, there was a small amount, I think about $100,000. Yes, I got a, $100,000 of the bond was, was put toward the Martin Luther King Jr. Park. Right now, and there has been, the city's pledged $2 million, as well as the county has pledged $2.5 million for this. We are waiting, the, we have finished the MOA, Memorandum of Agreement with the committee. So they are finalizing the plans. And once they had the plans, construction ready with the permitting and all, ready to be approved, they will turn it over to the city, and we will partner with them to, to get this built, put it out for bid.
Okay, question. Guys, we, we've been messing with this one a long time, okay? And I'm thankful for, I mean, I've been keeping up with the MOA and I understand, I mean, the memorandum of understanding and, and I, as my understanding, they have signed off of it, we have signed off of it, correct? Okay, and the, the, the planning part, is that something that their, their architect needs to sign off on? The architect they've been using all the while? Okay. When, when was the last meeting that we, where we are now? Because we, we gotta push this. We gotta help them. So when is the next meeting coming up? Because I done got calls, and I said, well, it's coming up today, and I'll hear some more.
I think Mr. Gibson can answer that question.
Yes, sir, I'm looking right at, yes, ma'am.
He's doing a good job of looking at me, too.
Yes, sir.
There, there has been, there has been straightforward conversations as to what's the deliverables for the MLK Committee to the city of Fayetteville. They're having some internal discussions on what that looks like and the placement of the spire. As soon as, as soon as they are finished with their internal discussions, from what the city wants and Mr. Stone wants, hasn't changed. They has, they have to deliver us documents that can be bidded and documents that can be permitted.
Now, because it's in that archi, what's it, well, I won't ask what his name. So there's nothing else that we can do to help them on their end, because they do need that help. It's the same folk. I've been dealing with these folk for 10 years. And it's the same people, the same architect, the same attorney. And what can we do to, can we help them?
Yes, yes, we can, and we are.
Okay, because I want us to get past this point. Now, as far as the spiral goes, where are they, are they accepting that we, it's, it has to move?
No, they're not.
And I know that the cost, I mean, I met with the, the CEO at P W C, and if they would just move it, how would that help us? Move where it is?
We would, we would be moving faster.
And if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, that that would, if, if we could move it a foot or two?
It's a little bit farther than a foot or two.
But the designer can do it.
It, it hasn't been placed, the, the. It, it, it hasn't been placed, the, the architecture of the spire doesn't change.
Right. We just need to move it.
Yes, where you put the.
And it can save quite a bit of money and a lot of time.
Yep.
Yeah, but say that part, because that's what it is, maybe council will understand about the foundation.
Yeah, the foundation hasn't been put in the ground, you can put it wherever you need to put it, the spire doesn't change, how you bolt it down and put electricity to it.
So I have Councilmember Honduras.
What is? Thank you, Mayor Protem, thank you, uh, Mr. Gibson, Mr. Stone, do either of you know the answer to the question, what's the prerequisite to, what's requiring this to be moved?
Uh, there's a couple of things in here, one, if you, if you look where it's located in the drawing, right there between the creek, big, uh, Little Cross Creek and, and Cross Creek, uh, that is a floodway. Uh, it'd be almost impossible if not, almost, it'd be very difficult if not impossible to build in the floodway.
Right.
That's part of the issue, um, and there's, I think there's some other PWC, uh, items in there, some other encroachments, there's some other utilities and some other things in there.
And I say there's a main in there, isn't there?
Yeah, there's, there's a main, there's a distribution, there's a major distribution line up, up top, too, there's, there's a lot of stuff.
Sewer main or, or water main?
A sewer main. And I think there's even some, I think there may be some water there as well.
Yeah, so I mean.
I think we got, I think we got the trifecta on this one.
But that's what I'm saying, you, you, you can't build in a floodway, you can't get a permit to build a floodway, you can't build on a water main, you can't build on a sewer main, so, uh, I'd say we're at an impasse.
And, and again, part of the, the item with this, with the, with the city, um, because of how our procurement rules are and what rules we have to follow with procurement, that's, they did not have to follow that when they hired their architect and their consultant, so that's one reason why we're, we, we, we have to limit ourselves at this point. Once they have the construction-ready documents, then we can step in, follow our rules to put it out for bid, like we usually do on that part. So we have to have those documents at that stage, permitted, ready to go, construction-ready for us to be able to step in.
Are you asking us when we have another meeting with the MLK Committee? It hasn't been scheduled yet.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll get that to schedule and we'll make sure, I want to make sure that Councilmember Davis and I have the.
Thank you.
We'll push forward, thank you.
Any other questions? Is that the end of your report?
That was it.
All right, thank you very much, great work.
Great work.
Lots of great things happening. All right, we need to go to four point oh six, special use permit, peer review and text amendment recommendations. Oh. Good evening, Mr. Muttles.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, I should say.
Everybody's been waiting for me up here, speaking to you. All right. Yes, special use permits. Throw it with me here, come on, I have contacts in, but I have astigmatism, so everything's a little blurry from the beginning. All right. So to preface all of this, uh, our goal here today is, is mainly to get a recommendation, uh, from you all, uh, to move forward to writing a text amendment to take to Planning Commission. Uh, so we spent quite a bit of time putting this together, um, it's, it has the ability to be flexible, um, but again, this is just trying to get some guidance, uh, to then go to Planning Commission with something solid. This proposal aims to revise the UDO use table for SUPs by assessing current requirements, reviewing past city council decisions, benchmarking them against peer cities, and recommending amendments aligned with modern urban planning principles, all to regulate land uses with potential community impacts. Now, what is an SUP? A special use permit is intended to address zoning challenges by accommodating uses that may not inherently align with specific districts, offering flexibility through a thorough review process to ensure compliance with city or county policies, and maintaining a balance between development facilitation and the preservation of the city's character. As I said earlier, we went over, uh, all of our peer cities, Raleigh, Charlotte, Wilmington, to name a few. I'm not going to go over each one of these in depth, but to, uh, point out the ones that I think are important. Charlotte uses a system called prescribed conditions, um, instead of special use permits. What that looks like is essentially what we already have in place as additional use standards, um, for many uses in our, in our UDO. So as long as whatever use they're going for meets that list of additional standards, um, and in our own UDO, we have some uses with additional standards that are quite extensive, then they are allowed to go at that point. And then Cumberland County uses the Board of Adjustment to handle their SUP, um, special use permit requests. In looking at past applications and city council decisions, um, for the past nine years and then broken down a little bit, um, more specifically to five years, there were seventy-two point two percent of applications that, that were approved in the last nine years, with eleven point one percent of them being denied, the gap, um, to a hundred percent is ones that were withdrawn. And then, broken down to five years, that's eighty-two point nine two percent of them approved, with seven point three two percent of them denied. Looking at this, we think it's, it's possible to streamline the development process, alleviate some administrative burdens, um, by suggesting that we explore, you know, reclassifying some of these consistently high approvals, uh, uses, as, uh, making them permitted by right. On the left side, you'll see the totals, um, in our use table compared with the peer cities, uh, for what is required to have a, a special use permit. Fayetteville stands out with quite a few at a hundred and fifteen use types that require a special use permit. The next highest is Winston-Salem at fifty-eight, and then it just goes down from there. On the right here is the past five years, um, all of the uses, and in parentheses, the number of times they've actually come to, to you all, um, on applications. Single-family attached there kind of standing out at the top. And what we've done, mainly what I've done, is broken it down into what we think that you should retain as SUP requirements from these past five years of most often seen special use permits, and what we think you should remove as SUP requirements. Some of the ones on the left there are ones that tend to be, uh, higher impact, hazardous, sort of controversial, and things on the right, less so, things that just, again, see that higher approval, uh, from you all more often than not. And then, what you're not seeing here are the other ninety or so odd, uh, special use permit uses in the UDO that you never see, haven't seen in the past ten years. Um, and so what we will do is, is in addition to, hopefully, these recommendations, go in and look at all of those use types and either allow them by right or, or not allow them. And that's not to say that we're just gonna go sweeping and say everything's allowed by right or not allowed by right, and we understand what heavy impact, you know, industrial uses and all that other stuff looks like, so, uh, for the main part of things like that, that, that have a higher impact will remain a special use, but there's, there's many more things in there that don't require, at least in our opinion, shouldn't require a, a special use permit. And so that's, I think that pretty much sums it up. To go over these really quick, option one is to grant us authorization to proceed with the recommendations here today, so what you saw in the two tables previously as to what to keep and what to remove for, uh, special use permit requirements, as well as going through the rest of the table, uh, changing them up, writing a text amendment, taking it to Planning Commission. Uh, that's what option number one will do for us. Option number two is, uh, authorizing us to explore, you know, any alternative recommendations that, that you all have for us, um, and simultaneously taking that, those recommendations, um, plus what we've got, writing a text amendment, taking it to Planning Commission, and then, of course, after that, coming to you all. Item number three is to direct the proposal to be returned to us, uh, for a more comprehensive assessment, again incorporating those suggestions from you all, uh, any other sort of recommendations, but instead of taking it to Planning Commission at that point, bringing it back, um, I would think to another work session. And item number four is to choose to uphold the current, uh, status quo and not take any action on this. So that's kind of the breakdown of that, and that'll do it for me.
All right, thank you very much for your report, I have Councilmember Green.
I have a question on the Wilmington, you didn't really go over Wilmington, um, but one of the pieces in the Wilmington special use permit that I really like is that it requires a neighborhood meeting to occur before the application is submitted and undergoes a kind of a completeness review from the neighborhood. That is the piece that I hear most about from constituents, that they didn't know. Um, I have two situations right now in a neighborhood in my district that they didn't know, and I, they're educated, they're, they would know, so they, they don't feel that, I, I feel like taking a piece out that involves some kind of notification, or maybe putting in another layer of the piece, my, my computer will not load, so I couldn't see that close as well as I'd like to, but I looked at it beforehand. So can you talk about, do you know anything about that and what Wilmington does, other than what you have here?
So other than what I have here, I don't know the in-depth through, uh, I just kind of went through and looked at what all of, in their UDOs respectively, what they, their process is laid out.
What do we have in place now? What's the current process that, for neighbors to be notified?
So we do have a notification process as required by the state, it's, um, a thousand feet, I believe, in, in radius of the subject property, uh, to be notified via letters, and then there's also an, an ad posted in the paper as well.
What paper?
Should be the Observer.
Sorry.
So to piggyback off that, I think the, I think maybe about two years ago, we expanded it to the thousand square feet, because what was happening is, I think it was like fifty or something, and, you know, if you didn't drive by the sign, or there was no houses around, you couldn't see it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's what I know that we have now, it was five hundred, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm Assistant City Manager. So I know that we had changed that for people, um, I can tell you personally, if something like that happens in my district, I will always tell, if somebody calls me, I'll say, "You need to have a meeting with the neighborhood." Anyone else want to speak? Did you get your, Councilmember Benevente?
Yeah, I'm just prepared to make a motion, I guess, but I guess, when it comes to things we're taking off the SUP list, that's what today's really about. I, I could definitely see a future discussion about things that are retained, SUP requirements having some kind of Wilmington-like component that requires some kind of community meeting, but I think that's a, a, a future discussion, but I, but I am interested in something like that. But for the meantime, um, I want to move that we take option one, grant y'all to take it to the board, to the Planning Commission, excuse me.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Honduras, um, so let's take a vote. Okay, I, that is eight to one, it passed, consensus vote.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Okay, we are gonna go to Councilmember Request, um, Councilmember Thompson, four point oh seven, City Council Agenda Item Request, Private Lake Revitalization. Councilmember Thompson, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I have sent everybody an email pertaining to this item, what I am looking for is consensus for us to move our state senators to ask the legislature for funding to revitalize some of these, uh, uh, breached and abandoned lakes across the city. This is not for a execution process, this is just for a planning process, so we can come back to legislators to tell them exactly what we're in need for, and that's something that we can do when we have our state legislators meet with us on an annual basis. So I'm looking for consensus for us, as a unit, to gather around funding some of these abandoned lakes across the city. Uh, anybody have any questions?
Uh, thank you, and I don't know, um, this is probably best for staff, does this request in any way bind the city as far as policy in the future if we don't get funding from the state?
Uh, this really has nothing to do with the city, because the city cannot fund anything that's not for a public use, this is just for us to gather the information, what's needed, to try to make it a public use, and then if we do get the funding from the state, then I'm pretty sure the city would have to match something to make this come to fruition.
Okay.
As far as public funding.
Okay, so, um, before I, um, go to Assistant City Manager Lent.
Unless that.
Okay, Councilmember Honduras, you have another question?
Um, yes, so the, um, the second question for staff would be, how does this affect our, um, other asks with our delegation for both Capitol Hill and the state?
I mean, I mean, it all, it all is related, right? I mean, we, we don't, we can't say that it will negatively or positively impact any of those things, we, we don't know yet, but you all are gonna set your legislative, state legislative priorities, I think, in a very near future meeting, this is included in that at this time. But, I mean, it's a hard question to answer, because your state legislators, you know, have limited say in what they can and can't get, so, you know, how much they ask, how little they ask is, is a political question.
So are we just kind of asking for a resolution or something to send up to them, or that we're?
No, I think, I think Mr. Thompson's interest is one that he can work somewhat directly with Ms. Val Applewhite, and staff will be involved in helping them gather some information. And then she, then she would pursue some sort of dollars for, like he said, a planning, maybe I'm gonna call it a planning grant, planning direct dollars that we could, and we'd have to pay a third party to put together some sort of study or analysis to show us what we could or couldn't do, with one of the first questions being, because it's, these may be private, uh, lakes, how can we look at public purposes for them, which has always been the biggest hurdle?
So, um, Councilmember here?
Let me just add.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Thompson?
You know, what I wanted to clarify is, this is for planning purposes only, we don't know what to ask for unless we know what we, we need. So this is just to find out what we need, so we know exactly what to ask for, because if there's any ambiguity, then the request of trying to get funding will be null and void.
Councilmember here?
Be my answer, let me be the answer that I was, um, going to ask, well, because, see, we, we have, I understand that request, I don't really have a problem with the request, um, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay, so I, um, I, I, okay, and, um, are we ready to move forward and see if we want to, um, push this? I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember McNair?
Well, um, I just have a question, is, will this be our first approach to doing something like this? You guys have, have you ever done this before?
Councilmember here?
I think that ask might be something I'm not one hundred percent familiar that we've done, but as far as the lakes and dealing with the lakes, uh, for example, in the city, and who owns, who doesn't own, who's gonna do repairs, who's not gonna do repairs, yes, we have had these discussions over the years, yes. That part is, yes.
Okay, I was wondering, because we have, I have, in, in our district, District Seven and District Six, there's been a, a great concern over, over there, but it's been very difficult, so.
So I, I guess the biggest thing that we have to realize, and I think this is why he wants to move it towards the Senate, if taxpayer money touches it, if city money touches, taxes pay something for a private lake, it is no longer private. So if your lake is in the back of your yard, the lake is no longer private, with, if tax dollars go into it.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I, I was just wondering if you guys have, um, been faced with this before?
Oh, yeah.
And, and what was the outcome?
That's why we're here.
Y'all didn't get anywhere, so.
No.
Okay, so, um, Councilmember Thompson, or, do you have anything?
No, just like to move it forward, ma'am.
Why you didn't get anywhere? Oh, okay. Just important to know why. I, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's, it's my understanding that, uh, Kurt Deviere got funding for a private lake on a golf course years ago, and it has something to do with residents paying a certain amount, uh, per the, uh, vicinity that they lived in towards the lake. So it has been done before, that's what gave me the approach, uh, to move this forward.
Um, okay, I, I'm not aware of that, so, um, would we like to move forward with research on that?
Never heard of research. I want to figure out why.
Okay, all right, so. Okay, one more question. Okay, one more question.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmembers Thompson, have you had a conversation with Senator Applewhite?
I haven't.
I would think that'd probably be the first start, because it could be case by case.
You haven't, or you have?
He said he hasn't.
I, I haven't.
He hasn't.
I have had conversation with somebody who has had a conversation with him about the same circumstance, personally.
Okay, so, maybe we should, maybe we should, because, maybe we should swing that around and maybe have a conversation with council, I mean, Senator Applewhite, and then come back?
I think Senator Applewhite knows how to go forward. We were just having a hard time of me giving her direction to move forward without council approval. Because, I can't give a senator direction on how to move something forward for the city by herself.
Okay, so, we're, we're at time, I think that we need to move forward with this, and we can either take a vote to see if we want to move forward, or you can pull it back and see if you'd like to speak to her, and then go from there.
I've probably had five or six conversations and meetings with staff and site visits and everything else. There's nothing else that I need to talk to her about, except moving forward.
Okay, um, city attorney, is, have you had, you've had conversations about this? We've-
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so, let's go with the vote, let's, no, we don't, it's a councilmember request, did we, yeah, so, all those in favor to move forward?
Raise your hand, are we raising hands?
I guess so, because this isn't working, so, I'll, okay, now it's on.
Agree.
Okay, that, five to four. All right, next one? In favor, okay? Next one is Councilmember Honduras, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, four point oh eight. Five to four. He's, he voted. So, four point oh eight will be the mayor, Mr. Mayor, are you on the line? Yeah, okay, so, we will move on to four point oh nine, which will be mandatory training for elected officials. Councilmember Honduras?
Mayor Protem, I think the mayor's intent was that it would still be discussed-
Okay.
-since it's on the agenda, although he's not here to present, he did send an email, it looks like.
I've been a little busy, I haven't looked at my email.
I, I haven't covered.
His motion's in the request, in his request, Mr. Mayor's, four point zero eight?
Yes, I, I know that, but I didn't hear the email that he wanted us to continue with that. Oh, it is, okay.
He's saying that he supports this right now.
Okay, all right.
Well, he's-
All right, so, it's city attorney, please.
Yes, ma'am, he just says that he supports the reentry, which is his item.
Okay.
So, that's his consensus vote for his item, as well as Councilmember Honduras's item, is what his email says, since this is just a consensus vote.
Okay, so, has everybody read the mayor's request?
Yes.
Does anybody have any, any discussion?
I'm just curious, so, how does that work? I mean, city attorney, as far as with the voting, if you're not here, did he vote on everything else, or just that, because that seemed, that's not transparent?
I think he's just saying he's got support, just to maybe get some people here to vote in his direction.
Because I was going to say that, I mean, it's not fair to the rest of the items that was listed on there, that didn't have any votes from him. Is it consensus?
He doesn't get, he's not, his vote doesn't count.
Okay, because what it seemed like, okay, I just want to be clear about that.
Mayor Protem, yes, so, the rules of procedure provide that once you're here, if you're not excused, then your vote is in the affirmative, so, anytime that he did not vote, it would be a yes vote.
Okay.
Since he was here and council did not take any action to formally excuse him.
Even in a work session?
Well, it's a consensus vote, but a vote is, is a vote nonetheless.
All right, all right, so, he's been voting yes quite a bit. All right, so, does anybody have any questions on this one item?
In consensus for four point oh eight.
All right, let's get a consensus vote, we ready? All right, I have eight to zero, someone has, oh, I'm sorry, and Councilmember Thompson said green, okay, let's move on to the next. Four point oh nine, City Council Agenda Item, Mandatory Training for Elected Officials. Councilmember Honduras?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In light of past allegations or accusations from former employees, I envision this as a proactive measure for training and education in the fields of positive communication, inclusiveness, and fostering a, a non-hostile and harassment-free working environment. The city favors, does not currently offer this mandatory training for elected public servants, however it does for our management team. I think by making this mandatory, we can ensure that all future elected public servants are equipped with the knowledge required to be the best public service we can be, and I think it's just really leading by example, if we expect our senior leadership team to take these courses, I think it's just good government for us to take them as well. And with that, I'll yield time to answer questions if there are any.
You voted against the settlement, because my understanding was you didn't think that those types of incidents had occurred, now you're saying that you believe we need training because of something that didn't occur?
I think you may be referring to one specific case, and I'm, I'm, my ask is more, or my reference to past allegations or for, in the history of the city, not for any one specific event. And, yes, I did vote against it, because I didn't think, I think the specific accusations you may reference, I didn't think, based on our outside counsel and our staff counsel, I didn't think they had been substantiated, so I didn't think there was any merit to those specifically, but this is more generalized, is, is my ask.
Councilmember here?
I'm trying to understand this request, because we, we do the ethics training, which is somewhat, every council member, especially every new council member, adds to be involved in council training, which also has a part with ethics training, whenever he or she is first voted in, becomes a council member. So, I was just trying to see how this particular item, does this supposed to supersede those items that we already, that are, that we have to take? And the ethics is one that is mandatory, I would like, I can't, I can't remember, but I like to think that there, there's a mandatory new member that we take at the School of Government and refresher courses, so I'm trying to see how this supersedes what we already have in place.
Okay, so, we're at five minutes, and I'm going to let Councilmember Honduras say his last, did you have your hand raised?
Just going to answer his question.
Okay.
Colleague, that's Harris' question, so, yes, to your point, Councilmember here, per North Carolina General Statute, we're required by the state for ethics training once per term, so once every two years, this wouldn't be to supersede that, this is in addition to that, so this is specifically in the fields of crucial conversations, or how to positively communicate with folks, inclusion, which is your DEI, and also how to, how to foster a non-hostile and non-harassment training. So, this, these are courses that are assistant managers and possibly even directors of the manager's, so before I put this councilmember request in, I met with our city attorney, interim attorney, our city manager, as well as the mayor, to, to kind of develop exactly what this ask would look like, and that's how I got to here. Matter of fact, I also met with Director Cherry Clip in Human Resources, so this is how we got the, what would potentially be appropriate courses or additional programming in addition to the ethics training we get from the state, so, thank you.
So, Ms. Paula, what time, I saw, what do I have left, what do we have left?
We're done.
We're done, okay. I have Ms. McNair that has a question, are y'all okay with her answering?
I just wanted to know, uh, city attorney's opinion and thoughts on this, but, but he said he already talked to her? Um, he, I don't have a personal opinion about it. Councilmember McNair, he, his questions were more about whether we do this already, or in terms of the structure or the content of the courses, that's what we discussed.
Okay. All right, it's time to take a vote. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I still have some that have not voted. Okay, we need vote.
I have more questions.
Okay, so, eight, nine, okay, that, that passes six to three. All right, next one, four point one two, City Council Agenda Item 901 Person Street. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, after putting in my councilmember request, I received some knowledge on there, was a little mix-up with her property, so, there's no further action that needs to take place with this agenda item. I am under the impression that there will be a new hearing for this issue coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Okay, so, we're going to go backtrack up to four point oh three. Mr. Gibson, is everybody ready? Okay. On the way in five minutes, or on the way in two minutes? Okay, all right, we got a five-minute break. All right, let's call the meeting back to order.
Thank you, council, again, as the, Councilmember here said, these are two weighted-on presentations, and what we'll be looking for is consensus to move forward to adoption, so that we can get some work done. The first part of this is, is our wayfinding, African-American Heritage Trail. The first part of this is our wayfinding, African American Heritage Trail. And what this does is it gives the community the opportunity to traverse through our downtown and our greenways plan with the signage and an understanding of crosswalks. And I think the work that Stuart Engineering has done, Jaquisha will be doing this part of the presentation, and then the Glenville Lake Connector will be done by Jake. Hopefully, he'll be here in about two or three minutes, but I think this one gives us a great opportunity to give you an idea of the work that's been done over the last six, seven months, and then we'll just move right on into the Mazarick Connector Trail. Thank you. Jaquisha?
Hi, my name is Jaquisha Cologne. I'm with Stuart Engineering, and Jake is currently upstairs, hopefully getting done with the call. And technically, we have this presentation flipped around. We have Mazarick Park first, and then the wayfinding elements. So I will just piggyback to the wayfinding element for right now. So for the wayfinding and signage element, the idea was to create a connected system that would help navigate people through the City of Fayetteville's parks and greenways and cultural sites, ideally that it would be easy to navigate and unified in design and signage types. So we created a little cute subway map and a color system that is piggybacking off of the previous wayfinding design elements from the center city parks and trails plan done previously. And we have advanced the signage types that were shown in that plan as well. So there are four primary sign types, monument, directional, confirmational, and educational. Monument obviously would be at the front entrance of many of the parks. Directional would be either on urban trails or within parks themselves, pointing to different facilities within the park. Confirmational just lets you know that you are on this trail, and that has two different post types, also that there's a pavement medallion option and mile marker options as well. And educational would be your big interpretive signs that have a display telling you know about what facility you're in or what site you're near, what historic thing happened there, or about the natural environment. For the African American Heritage Trail, we developed a new logo and icon for that, and this ties directly in with the rest of the wayfinding trail names and logo icon family. So you can see that the previous one in the corner over here and this new logo that highlights the eastern, central parts of Africa where a lot of the transatlantic slaves were being brought from, and this one is different from the others because the others usually use one or two colors, and this one uses three, technically four. And this would apply to any location where there is currently one of these posts out front, or also be embedded in the other sign types as direction to like the Historic Haymont Urban Trail, or the connector to E.E. Smith and Lamont Street Park, or the Orange Street School Connector. We also show this, integrating this within a public art installation for crosswalks. Obviously, this would be something that can be done by local artists in the community, and this was just something that we threw together internally, so can be something that is more the community group effort. And here is that integrated visual language showing the other trail icons, park icons. We have relabeled the Mercerston Road Urban Trail with the FSU Bronco. We have a connector for Methodist University at the end of the Cape Fear Trail. The other future trails are shown as well, along with the African American Heritage Trail icons that we're using. Now, if you can see here, the cool colors are predominantly the parks, the greenways, and the warm colors are tied directly to the African American Heritage Trail stops and locations. And in this map here, this is like a graphic we made off of the City of Fayetteville Trail system. The red would be the Haymont Connection, the Cape Fear River is this bright green here. So break here showing that this is where it breaks off for the Methodist University further up north. Cross Creek is shown here in this darker blue, and you can sort of place the other ones there on the map as well. The next steps for the wayfinding and signage plan would be phase one implementation. This would be primarily focusing on monument, directional, and confirmational signage types, with educational signs coming in later phases. Guess I, I can take questions on the wayfinding part for right now while we wait for Jake to come back.
Could you go back to that picture with those three lovely people standing up in front of that gate, please?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, questions? Thank you. This is a big item for me, a big concern for me. Now, I am thankful, and I'll go along with us having our connection further up at the Mary McDonald Park, correct? That's where we are, instead of here? So...
Wrong way, sorry. Here.
Okay, and I support, you know where I stand. You know where I stand with this. And my concern is, because it's been slow-moving, we're gonna have the Mary McDonald Park connection going all the way to, if I'm understanding it correctly, to the Glenville Lake, and then we having it making a left, going this particular drawing, going all the way back down, I guess by the lake to the trail to pick up at Filter Plant, correct?
Yes.
Now, this is a discussion that I have brought up on a number of occasions, and I thought, I thought, I thought that I had council support on this because this was the reason that we had two budgets put together at our FY23. When staff went back upstairs to redo the budget, they went back up to redo the budget because I was not giving at least my part of the support for what was initially there because I brought this in. Now, this is my question. We did the, we had the survey, we had the, the whatever we call it, Mazer, easy thing at Smith Recreation Center. And today, I'm still asking, I know I've asked two or three times on, I wanted to get the feedback, I wanted to see what the surveys say, I wanted to understand what the residents said and what they would like. And with that input, or not, but with that input, I was up under the understanding during that FY23 budget session that last day, it was either the 30th or the 31st of June, that we were going to have a opening somewhere there, either, I can understand there's a PWC issue with it going completely across, but that we would have a boardwalk or pier somewhat like we have on the opposite side, okay? Off the boardwalk on the other, the original side, okay? That I've fished on many, off of many, many times. So I want to understand where we are with that, and I don't know if you can give the answer on this part. I've been asking and asking this, and I'm tired of it being drug around so much. I want to know about the FAMPO money of the additional $350,000 that was supposed to be matching to this, Mayor Protem, for the $700,000 that we were supposed to have that was told to me in order for me to move forward to support that budget for FY23. Now, where are we with this? Thank you.
The part, and I can take them in sections. The part that talks about where this goes and if there's going to be the ability to fish and all that kind of stuff, that's in this feasibility study, that's where this begins.
Okay.
So that part will be done, once we get through this and you can make it on.
Feasibility study?
Yes, sir. So, and that in here, the beginning of this tells you that.
Okay.
And where the public is and the support and all of that. From the funding from FAMPO, the, it was submitted.
Yes, I think it was what, November, December?
Well, just probably a couple of weeks ago. It has not been finished yet. In the first round of funding, that didn't get funded. So doesn't mean that it won't get funded, it just didn't get funded in the first round. So what happens is if, if the council...
And we have two members that vote on that FAMPO committee, right? There's out of this, off of this council, we got two councilmembers, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I would like to know if you can pull the records, I'd like to know where they voted, please, sent to me.
They haven't voted yet.
They haven't voted yet.
They haven't voted yet.
You want to?
I'm on the FAMPO, I'm newly on the FAMPO. I was not part of this, and Councilmember Honduras has just been appointed, so yes, I've been to two meetings. I've learned a lot, a whole lot.
Thank you.
So, and one of the things that, what's good news is that the Choice Neighborhoods that you guys approved adds value to the Glenville Lake because it adds, if it goes and is successful, adds a million dollars. So that makes very good sense.
How many million?
One.
One.
So, once this is done and we move forward, then we still have the $350,000 to go ahead and start construction drawings that moves this forward. The FAMPO then has to have a conversation, and how that conversation ends then gets the other front $2 million to this Glenville Lake project, or 1.8, 1.9. And if then that's successful, then you have your funding to go ahead and then do the construction.
Okay, now, my last, maybe my last question, please, Dr. Mr. Gibson. Whenever you gave us the presentation last Monday, you mentioned that there was either some grants that you were applying for or that you had applied for, and the number, if I remember, was either three or 3.5 million dollars. And I was, you know, I was rather excited about that when you made that discussion, when you had that discussion. Now, explain it a little bit more in detail, and please let me know, and the citizens that are listening, and those that I'm gonna tell about this meeting, how can that three or that 3.5 million, whichever amount that it was, can we think some of it may be used for this item?
Well, what we would do is that was, once you...
What amount was it?
Yeah, well, that's what it was, it would be the 1.8, 1.9 to FAMPO, and then Choice Neighborhoods go to, that would add another million, so you would have your two-point, that's the funding.
Yeah, you didn't say it that way at the presentation.
Yeah, well, I was trying to wait till we get to this, but anyway.
You just said straight three.
But anyway, what would happen is, the total cost for the bridge going across and then the trail going from Mary McDonald all the way down to Filter Plant, that would then be probably $2 million to do the whole trail with the boardwalks and all of that. And then coming across the creek would probably be another million and a half to $2 million to build that boardwalk or whatever we decided to do across. So the, due to total project is probably around six to seven million to do the bridge across and then the trail all the way down.
And I appreciate it, and I knew where we were, but just really trying to share more of value, the value of this to these communities. If we're going to uplift these communities...
Exactly.
If we're going to go in there and do all the conversations that we're speaking on with the Murkison Shorts Program from Elliot Street, Elliot Circle, up to Rosemary, what a great, great tool, what a great, great plus for these, this older neighborhood that a lot of the original owners in a few more years will be passed and gone on, and how we can uplift this neighborhood. And this is very, very important. Gosh, this will also draw in infield development, which is very, very important. And we put infield together to go in and, you know, tear down some of the old homes and come back, especially if there's a lot that's pretty large, you can maybe put one or two homes on that area. So this is a big, big, big plus, and I just hope council will hold this close to their heart as we move forward because the community needs your support.
Let's let Jake do the first 10 to 15 minutes, and then I think it'll close in, and then I'll come back and talk some more if you need something else.
Thank you. Hey.
Hey, sir.
Thanks for, thanks for having us.
Good to see you.
How do we go back? This way? Did you do this yet?
Nope.
Okay, great.
Just scheduled lately.
Okay, perfect. So you all have a history recently of investing in parks, and I'm Jake Petrowski, by the way, with Stuart. And, you know, this is something that we looked at and really look at, there's a lot going on all over the city, but especially in and around the center city. So this is, this example or this project is really trying to connect the dots. It builds on the Center City Parks and Trails Master Plan, which is a couple of years ago, and the vision is really a world-class system of parks and trails linking neighborhoods to the center city and key destinations. So this is, this is something that, it was a bigger-picture plan, it really looked at Fayetteville State all the way to downtown and all the way to the Cape Fear River. But doing that, we realized there were some key pieces, some key connections that needed a little bit more attention, needed to get figured out, and how exactly we're gonna make those connections. One of those connections is in and around Mazarick Park. So how do we connect neighborhoods on the east side of Glenville Lake and Fayetteville State University to Mazarick Park, and then down, along, across creek, down into downtown? So that's really what we looked at, kind of this blue area with this effort. And there's so many opportunities for connections, from, you know, FSU, Mazarick Park to downtown, to the Harrief Shaw Cross Creek Linear Park, Veterans Park, MLK Park, Rowan Park, Methodist University and Cape Fear River Trail, Botanical Gardens, you know, then the brand-new senior center needs to be connected to all of it and the African American Heritage Trail, which y'all talked about. The other kind of interesting piece of this is the neighborhood has been advocating for this connection for quite some time. You know, when Glenville Lake was the principal water supply for the city, there was a fence put along that east side of the shore, and neighborhoods that used to be able to get there can't get there anymore. So this is something that we want to address and something that we're looking to do with this plan. Issues and input, we did hear from a number of folks, we had a survey, we had a public meeting, people came out, and through the survey, 80-some percent of people really do support these connections. There were some concerns that were expressed at the public meeting. People concerned about water quality and concerned about public safety came up as well. So those are some things, as you all move forward to implementing some of these things, and, you know, the design kind of evolves for some of these things, those are some things we need to address, and we need to make sure that we do protect water quality in Glenville Lake. And I think there's some engineering things, we can do that to mitigate impacts of a trail, but also potentially mitigate some impacts of just stormwater runoff from adjacent development or older development or roads and that sort of thing that just didn't have the necessary infrastructure in there. So we can fix some issues that are ongoing already, probably. In public safety, there's a number of design details that we can do along trails and in Mazarick Park or adjacent public spaces in order to address those safety concerns. So even if people were concerned about it, they gave us some good ideas on how to address those concerns. And Michael was touching on this, but this is kind of the connection plan that shows Mazarick Park on the east or the west shore of Glenville Lake. Fayetteville State University is up on the top right here. And we've identified two potential locations for bridges. We wouldn't do two bridges, but we would study two locations in the next phase to identify the one that works the best. And a flood study is really the next step there to understand if we can put some pilings down in and not cause upstream impacts. But a key piece of this is really to connect neighborhoods to the lake and across the lake, but also connect Fayetteville State University over through the neighborhoods and to the lake as well, and to Mazarick Park. So there's a number of different specific projects in the plan. A key one is the east shore trail that kind of goes along the east shore of the lake. And that would be connecting to the bridge that goes to Mazarick Park. But even if the bridge takes longer to implement, you could implement that east shore trail and provide access to green space and a trail to those neighborhoods and FSU students. We did balance this. You'll note that the east shore trail on the map doesn't go directly real close to the water treatment plant because that was another concern that PWC brought up, is they don't want people walking by the water treatment plant, you know, just to have. And that's understood. And so we wouldn't be suggesting that that whole fence is removed. We still want to keep folks away from that sensitive infrastructure. But there's a way, there's a design solution that balances kind of that concern with also improving access. And this is just a concept of what you could have. You could have this trail that kind of weaves its way kind of on the upper end of the floodplain. It could have some wildlife overlook or have some signage for, interpretive signage for educational and kind of nature exhibits, that sort of thing. And we would look to preserve a lot of the trees along the lakeshore, too. This would be away from lakeshore. You don't want to cut down all the trees because then there would be some more runoff and sediment going in and that sort of thing. So, you know, that's something that we would also want to customize. So, yeah, that's it. And then, but we did have the next steps, one at the end here, too. But for the Mazarick Park connections is really, you know, survey and doing that flood study for the trail piece and then for the bridge crossing piece to kind of move those things forward, pursuing state and federal funding for the design and construction of those priority projects. You know, the bridge and the east shore trail, those are two big ones. But there's also some missing pieces of sidewalk that some neighborhoods don't have. And it'd be nice for them to be able to get from their house to the trail, but also maybe from their house to Merkison Road on a sidewalk. So, and really improving those connections to FSU and Merkison Road is going to be part of it. But we don't necessarily need, you know, sidewalk on every street. There's some streets that are perfectly fine, you know, not having a sidewalk. But looking and prioritizing some of those connections would be important. Working with FSU and other partners, you all know that there's a lot going on over there in terms of investment on the campus and nearby the campus to make sure that, you know, your neighborhood improvements that you're planning really benefit the neighborhood, but also dovetail with some of the investments they're making. And then the signage, you know, we've identified a couple areas to implement the signage first. So that would be kind of the next steps on the wayfinding signage plan.
All right. Thank you very much. I have Councilmember Hondros. Was on my...
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I think the gentleman covered my question. Was, I was fairly certain we got our drinking water from Glenville Lake, so I was curious if PWC was part of the process, and evidently, they had been so.
Very much so, part of the process.
Yeah. I mean, there's more coordination needed and fine-tuning kind of the exact design, exactly where the trail would go and making sure their concerns are addressed. And I mean, that's something that, you know, that's definitely going to be part of it. One of the things we did is they were asking, you know, are there trails, paved greenway trails, in critical watersheds elsewhere in the state? And, you know, obviously, they didn't want to be the first one to do that. But we were able to give them a half dozen examples of similar projects. And there's ways to do it right, so.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I think this is great. As I travel, I see a lot of the signage, and it definitely makes sense. The only question I have as far as the colors, is that something that can be changed? And the reason I say that, when I see the Merkison Road, and I'm assuming that's the Bronco, since I was thinking maybe the school color?
Yeah, it was given to me purple, and I questioned that when I first got it, and I just kept it purple. But it can definitely be the actual university color as well. Same with the Methodist University. I think that one is already dark green, though. But, yeah.
Good move, Councilmember, because we've worked very diligently to, in the past, to make sure that the colors are in the district.
Because, look, I know this Methodist, that I see green.
I've instilled it. I've instilled it.
Yeah, I mean, little stuff like that, even like the icons that are used, you know? That could be customized, you know? And I think especially as it relates to some of the African American Heritage Trail signage and the crosswalks and stuff like that, I mean, we can, those can be modified. I mean, the crosswalks would be a great opportunity for a local artist.
So, Council, can I get consensus to move this forward? Okay. I have three seconds, but we're going to bring it back. And so can I get a rate of vote, and then we can adjourn after the vote? Councilmember Thompson? So I will say that is ten to... Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. I will say that is 10 to 0 because we've had two that have flown that said that it will be yes. So that is unanimous. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you very much. Y'all were a complete delight. Thank you.